Boy, it is a gorgeous day in Tallahassee today. It is Wednesday, April 21st. At 3 o'clock in the afternoon, I'd like to call the Tallahassee City Commission meeting to order. It is my honor and privilege to introduce Dr. Brian Robinson of the Emmanuel Baptist Church, who has joined us for the invocation. Dr. Robinson, thank you so much. If you will please rise and join me for the invocation.
Let us pray. Almighty God, on these occasions especially, we need your wisdom, your counsel, that Father, we may do your work in your ways. Father, so often, we're tempted to do things in the wisdom of man, but we realize that man's wisdom will fail us. And yet, there's a greater wisdom from God Almighty, who gives freely to all who ask. And I pray, Father, for our mayor, I pray for those who are here today, that you would give them that wisdom, that they would seek your counsel in your ways. I also pray, Father, for this city. I pray for Leon County and the counties surrounding Florida. I pray for our great state and this nation. For, Father, we need a date like September 23rd of 1857, when a great prayer awakening began in New York City. Father, we need that in our nation today with so much division, so much animosity, so much uncertainty. Oh, God, turn our hearts to you. For there's only one way to peace and to joy, and that is through Jesus. And it is in his name we pray. Amen.
Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? The flag is to my right or left. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Dr. Robinson, thank you once again for joining us, colleagues. Dr. Robinson just moved to Tallahassee a couple of months ago to accept his calling at Emmanuel Baptist. And I just learned that he came from the state of Louisiana, not too far from where my wife is from. So, we've already connected, and it's great to have you here in Tallahassee. Thanks for being a part of the meeting today. Mr. City Manager, walk us through any agenda modifications we might have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have one addition to your agenda. Item 13.8 has been added. It involves a discussion of ordinance adoption process, and that will be led by the City Attorney Jackson. In addition, Mr. Mayor, I believe the City Attorney also has a comment to share regarding a public hearing item.
Madam Attorney?
I wanted to announce for the benefit of the public that ordinance number 21-Z-03 is not listed on the agenda, but was noticed for public hearing. It will not be heard this evening because the applicant has withdrawn the application. It was the first and only public hearing on ordinance 21-Z-03, proposed removal of property from local registry of historic places.
Excellent. And at the beginning of the public hearing, we'll make the same announcement as well. Colleagues, any questions on the agenda modification? Seeing none, we'll move forward. We have two presentations of proclamations today, and because of COVID, I will read both proclamations from my seat here. The first proclamation is in recognition of Arbor Day. And I believe Mindy Mormon, our urban forester, is here that will also be accepting the proclamation. After I'm done reading, I'll come join you down here. And our second proclamation is in recognition of Tallahassee Earth Day, and we're pleased to have Grant Gelhart from the Sierra Club, who is here, that'll be accepting the proclamation as well. Ladies and gentlemen, a proclamation from the governing body of the city of Tallahassee. Whereas, in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can cut energy use for heating and cooling, help clean the air, reduce stormwater runoff, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas Tallahassee has one of the highest percentages of tree canopy coverage in the nation at 55% and has for 28 consecutive years been recognized by the Arbor Day Foundation as a Tree City USA community, and whereas a healthy urban forest has repeatedly been shown to be a critical component to a vibrant and livable community economically, environmentally, and socially, and whereas the city of Tallahassee adopted its Urban Forest Master Plan in 2018 as a guide for the future of our community's tree canopy and to improve the vital city asset as our community changes in the coming years, and whereas the city of Tallahassee employs more than 20 certified arborists and tree care professionals who provide close care for the trees within our public right of ways, participate in reforestation efforts, and help educate residents about proper care for trees on private property. Now, therefore, I, John Daly, by the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Tallahassee, do hereby recognize Saturday, April 24th, 2021, as Arbor Day in the city of Tallahassee, and urge all citizens to plant and care for trees to help continue the long-lasting relationship between trees and our community. Dated today, April 21st, 2021, signed by me, John Daly, Mayor of Tallahassee. Mindy, I look forward to presenting this in just a second. From the governing body of the city of Tallahassee, a proclamation. Whereas April 22nd, 2021, marks the 51st annual celebration of Earth Day, which began on April 22nd, 1970, to inspire environmental awareness and encourage the conservation, protection, and appreciation of our nation's natural resources. And whereas the city of Tallahassee has a longstanding record of environmental stewardship and is recognized for its leadership in sustainability initiatives, including being named one of the top 50 green fleets in North America in 2020, and whereas the city has developed and implemented numerous programs that promote recycling, green buildings, water quality improvements, litter control, and active lifestyles to help our community be sustainable, and whereas several programs focus on local food production to beautify neighborhoods, increase access to healthy food, and spur economic development, including City Farm TLH and the South Side Farmers Market, and whereas Tallahassee became a silver-level, bicycle-friendly community in 2018, and has a nationally recognized park system with 70 miles of trails and 3,500 acres of parkland to protect natural habitats, and whereas Tallahassee has one of the highest percentages of tree coverage in the nation at 55% and has for 28 consecutive years been recognized as a Tree City USA and has implemented a holistic urban forestry master plan, and whereas the city has performed over 64,000 free energy audits for customers, provides grants, loans, and rebates for energy-efficient home repairs and appliance purchases, and promotes energy efficiency through innovative programs such as the Neighborhood Reach. Now, therefore, I, John Daly, by the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Tallahassee, do hereby proclaim April 22nd, 2021, as Tallahassee's Earth Day. In witness of each and every one of you, dated today, April 21st, signed by me, John Daly, the mayor of Tallahassee. I would like to invite both Mindy Mormon, our urban forester, and Grant Gelhart to please come. And let's pose for a picture down here, and I'd love to present the proclamations to you. And colleagues, as we do, if you want to just stand and get together to be in the picture as well, that would be fantastic. Part of our absolutely amazing team. We appreciate everything that y'all do here at the city of Tallahassee. On a personal note, it's really hard to talk and read that much with the masks on. I found myself having to pause to take a breath every now and then. Do we have any other presentations to come before the City Commission tonight?
No, sir, we do not.
Do we have any announcements to come before the City Commission tonight?
No announcements.
Do we have any appearances by other governmental entities or appointed boards or committees to come before the City Commission?
No, sir.
Excellent. Let's go straight into citizen input on agenda items. Mr. Clark, how are you doing today, sir?
I'm great, Mayor, thank you. How are you?
Excellent. Walk us through our citizen input, please.
Mayor, we do have individuals here in chambers who wish to speak on items on our agenda. We will hear from those first, and then we will hear from those who have connected virtually to speak on agenda items. Each speaker will have three minutes for his or her remarks. There's a timer in front of Commissioner Richardson that will have a light that turns green and then yellow and then red, and I'll also give you a heads up when you're near your time. We do have speakers on un-agenda items. We will take them at the very end of the meeting after we've completed our agenda material. Anyone speaking on a public hearing, we will take you at that 5:00 hour, when public hearings were specifically publicly noticed. With that, we'll begin with our first speaker.
Please, Mr. Clark.
Will be Ed Tocelli. Speakers, I forgot to mention the microphone there in the center of the room, please.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon. I'm Ed Tocelli.
Sir, I hate to cut you off. Can you keep your mask on? Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Good afternoon. I'm Ed Tocelli. I live in Miami, 2040 Alton Road, and I also reside in Tallahassee at 2608 Klein Street. And I'm here to announce that I build naturally occurring affordable housing, and I build it in the United States. We're actually about to undertake a project here in the former Department of Children and Family at 1317 Wynwood. I believe we have shared our concept drawings, which I believe have been in favor. We're going to build 440 naturally occurring affordable housing units and also have 100,000 square feet of social impact programs for the city. So, I would just like to share that, and I would hope that we would get the support of the city for this much-needed project post-pandemic. And if you have any questions or need me for anything, you can always either call, email, or however you need to get in touch with me.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for being with us, and thank you for investing in Tallahassee. Our next speaker, Mr. Clark.
Next speaker is Erica Jones on item 1307, which is your municipal ID card program. The next speaker will be Stanley Sims.
Great.
Erica Jones.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Erica Jones. My address is 280 Knox Road, Apartment 131. And I'm from Miami, Florida. I've been here like three years. I was trying to sign my son up for a GED class in 2017, and I sent him up there with all his qualifications and everything, and they had told him that he couldn't sign up that day because he didn't have a birth certificate. Mind you, I came from, before Miami, I was living in Georgia, and I was in an abusive relationship, so I fled here. And they told me I didn't have a birth certificate, and I told them that I didn't want to go back down there because my abuse is down there. And so, now my son is 17, out of school, and I was trying to find some resources to get him in school. And he came home, and he told me that not only him turned around, but it was like seven other young boys in that line turned around. So, my issue is, can the city of Tallahassee provide more like other options besides a birth certificate to qualify to sign your child up for school? And another issue I have is eviction. I have an issue with my landlord. My rent is paid. She put my, she put an eviction on my record. I tried to, you know, get her to, you know, get it off my record, and the rent is paid, but she won't. So, that's, those are the only two issues that I have right now.
Excellent. Thank you so much for coming. If you don't mind, the school issue is a separate jurisdiction by the school board. But I'm going to ask, in the back of the room, Wayne, Wayne Tetter? Wayne Tetter is the Assistant City Manager. If you wouldn't mind walking over to Wayne and just making sure that he has your contact information, the city will be more than happy to find the appropriate person at the school board to walk you through that issue and help take care of it. Yes, ma'am. Thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please, sir.
I'm at 603 Martin Luther King Boulevard. I'm the executive director of help. I have a problem with this limony odds being on the consent. This is a hot item, based on a Zoom meeting, and I just got off. Not only this is a hot item, but the way you are handling it, is handling it resembles white privilege. If Frenchtown had not properly been ready for the funding, I don't think that the city of Tallahassee would go to the extreme measures they are doing to fund a performing arts center doing a pandemic, when I got 16 city employees cleaning up debris from years and years inside of a Sierra. How many of them kids that's walking those illegal sidewalks? I showed them to you, Mr. Manlow, that pedestrian. How many of them are going to enjoy this performing arts center? Because I tell you what, we spent money on that big hotel, and I ain't been up there yet. Mr. Manlow, I don't know what you're reading and what you're looking at, but this is important. This is about funding. Why is it so hard for the city of Tallahassee to tell white people no and hold them accountable and to be fair to us in communities of color? And then I gotta stand up here and look like the bad guy? When it's you, you put us against one another. When you do things like this, fam, you 10 million wasn't a consent item. Sometimes you gotta choose a side. Sometimes it ain't hard when it comes to black people. And guess what? I'm wearing this face mask today. It was given to me by Bridget Floyd, George Floyd's sister.
You're at 30 seconds.
Our voices are being heard, and we are making changes. And if you all fund the Lefon Arts Program, that's privilege funding.
Our next speaker.
Next speaker is Tyler Maldonado, speaking on item 1301, the Artful Infrastructure Program, followed by Dan Taylor on the same item.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Tyler Maldonado, 417 North Gaston Street. I have some handouts for y'all if you'd like. Yes, sir. So, I'm here today to talk about the Artful Infrastructure Program that's going to be proposed for the Underground Utilities Department. I'm one of the KCCI Community Catalyst members for this year. A little bit about our group. We have 12 of us. We're made up of lawyers, urban planners, community activists, artists, communication experts, all of the like. We've been meeting since January weekly, and our task for this year was to expand the Art of the Box program and to find some sort of sustainability measures for that program. So, we've been talking about that since January. Our group first kind of landed on the equitable access to art piece, and that's sort of what we've arranged ourselves around for the past four months. We met with y'all to talk about our proposed corridor concept, and the whole idea behind that was to equitably, was equitable access to art through these different neighborhoods. So, you have Levy Park, Frenchtown, Downtown, Famue Way, and then South City and Jake Gaither. And we were looking at that equity piece as sort of our guiding light. And with that being said, what we're asking today is to support that Artful Infrastructure Program, as well as perhaps look for a timeline for implementation. One of the things that we were looking at doing was having this program be implemented in the fall of this year. That kind of lines up with the other projects that we've been doing. We've been working with Leon County. We're also working with Leon County School District. The Leon County Project, that Hall for Artists is out right now, and we'll be looking to install those wraps in July, as well as we're working with NIMs Middle School, where there's also going to be an art project that comes out in July as well. So, what we would be asking is that along with this agenda item to create this program, which we're entirely in favor for, we couldn't have asked for a better sustainability piece of this project. What we're asking is for there to be an established timeline for when these things will be implemented. And our group had come together and thought that fall would be a great way to kind of keep the momentum that was going with this project and keep it moving forward. So, with that, I can provide the handouts. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker. And by the way, if you just want to hand, there we go. Our next speaker, please. Your name and address for the record.
Dan Taylor, and he'll be followed by Shannon Colavecchio. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Dan Taylor. I live at 1224 Mitchell Avenue in Tallahassee, and I'm also a KCCI catalyst here to talk about 1301. But I did want to divert quickly just to say that I'm hosting the Equality Florida Gala coming Saturday night, and I wanted to congratulate and thank the commission on there, because I get the honor of helping present to you the 2021 Community Partner Award, and it makes me very proud to be a member of this community and live here. I'm also an artist, and so something else that makes me proud to live here is our public art. You may remember a city project that was done in cahoots with Coca. Cahoots doesn't sound like a good word, does it? In conjunction with Coca, called Tall Art many years ago, and there were wayfaring signs around the city, but as they were being changed out and updated, someone had the great good idea to make turn them into art pieces for local artists. And one of mine was selected, and it was on Park Avenue by the bankruptcy court. I was thrilled to death to have that piece of art there for a couple of years. And like some random Tuesday afternoon, when it was getting updated and changed, I got a phone call, and the guy said, "So, we're changing out your pole. Do you want it?" And so, I said, "Well, yes, I do." So, I wrangled a truck and went and got the pole that has my art on it, and it is now standing in my backyard and has been for years, and I think it's really cool, or it's really weird. I'm not sure which, but it's, but there it is. So, you fast forward to 2020, and there was another call to artists for a project called Art of the Box, and that resulted in another piece of my art called Springtime Tallahassee getting selected, and it's now wrapping a box at Tallahassee and Monroe. And when that's over, I doubt Mrs. Marshall will let me have that traffic control box for my backyard. So, but that, but that box has really helped boost my exposure and increased sales, and it actually prompted me to apply to become a KCCI catalyst. So, I don't think I have to tell you that the benefits of public art are legion, and we look forward to seeing the Artful Infrastructure Policy come to light, and also more immediately seeing the Art of the Box concept expand. It is already expanding with the Leon County through their investment of $20,000 this year, and we hope the city will also invest in making the corridor concept come to life. As Tyler noted, the momentum is strong, and we are eager to keep it going. We have a lot more catalysts that wanted to speak, and you're, actually, there's going to be another one, right? Shannon's going to talk. But I just wanted to let you know that our collective comments reflect the desire and passion of this team for how we recommend the program be established and implemented so that city residents can immediately begin to use and to see and experience the benefits. We are here to assist to make this as easy and successful as possible. Thank you. Thanks to you and to your staff for looking for ways to make our community even more beautiful while showcasing the local artistic talent that lives here. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Clark.
Shannon Colavecchio, and then Ramona Abernathy-Payne.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon. As you said, I'm Shannon Colavecchio. I am a member of the KCCI 2021 Catalyst Team. By day, marketing and communications is my job. I am an associate managing director at the Moore Agency, and I used to be a newspaper reporter way, way back in the day. So, I do come from a perspective of understanding what makes good news and also what makes a community and businesses excited. And so, what we are so excited about is to see the potential for what this can be, because as I mentioned, this project does date back to 2020, right? And we are already seeing momentum with the county. We're seeing momentum with schools, and now because of this agenda item that you'll consider today, we're seeing momentum in the city. And so, we just want to stress that what our desire is, is to make sure that this is marketed and implemented in a way that is strategic, right? And that makes sense. You know, we see possibilities, for example, for, you know, this to really become a hallmark of what it means to live here. So, one example is, you know, can the boxes be promoted on some sort of unifying website? And then that gets promoted by Visit Tallahassee. And then we have walking tours and driving tours, and these become things that not only draw city residents together to maybe areas of the city that they don't always go to, but also brings people to those businesses and becomes a tourist marker, right? When you look at cities like West Palm Beach, New Orleans, they have these things there, and they really are identifying structures, much like our tree canopy, right? These are places that people drive to. And so, what we are asking for is just that we, you know, look at the accessibility and neighborhoods that this will provide, obviously, the exposure for local artists, and just really beautifying the community that we live in. We do recommend that the requested $22,000 that you'll consider today is used on our team's proposed corridor concept that Tyler referenced. As the agenda item is written, those funds are not earmarked. What we would recommend is that those funds are specifically allocated for the traffic control boxes, and that some of those funds go to artist stipends to thank them for their good work, and that the remainder go for wrapping those boxes and installing them. Our team is very diverse, and so we have also been very cognizant of the diversity of the placement of our corridor concept and our project, and so that has been a hallmark. And so, we hope that that corridor concept, starting in the south part of the city, moving its way up, will remain. And we also stress the need for a timeline. As we mentioned, the momentum is strong, and so we really want the city to be part of that momentum, right? To be part of what has already started, and really what you've already started to help champion in your support for the 10 boxes that we see today.
You have about 20 seconds.
So, thank you again for all of your time, and we are just very excited to see this come to life. Thank you all.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next is Ramona Abernathy-Payne, speaking on item 1303, which is Development Wavers for Affordable Housing Projects.
Thank you so much for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Ramona Abernathy-Payne, 2006 East Indian Head Drive. Thank you for giving me a chance to address you this afternoon. As president of Indian Head Lehigh Neighborhood Association, I'm here today in support of agenda item 1303, to develop an ordinance allowing conversion of property to affordable residential housing. Specifically, I'm addressing the conversion of the Wynwood Office Complex. In talking with those involved in this redevelopment, I've learned the intent to make changes only to the interior of the existing buildings. This is great news. Since our neighborhood abuts the Wynwood property, we have long been involved with it. Many of our residents have worked in the complex over the years. A neighbor was instrumental in opening a footpath from the back of the Wynwood property into the Indian Head Lehigh Neighborhood via Simulachi Nini. More recently, our neighborhood has worked with the city and the state to preserve and maintain this path. We care deeply about the ancient oaks on the property and about the carefully engineered water course. We celebrate the wild birds that visit there daily. I've heard from the developers that they also treasure these natural aspects to the property. The second paragraph under Statement of Issue in the agenda item mentions, in quote, "engagement of neighborhood and business stakeholders through community meetings to receive feedback on ordinance language," end quote. You have likely already seen written comments submitted by my neighbor, Will Hanley, supporting this redevelopment. Will expresses concerns for pedestrian and bicycle safety along this very busy stretch of Blerstone Road. Similarly, we of Indian Head Lehigh Neighborhood stand ready to provide feedback and assist in the redevelopment of the Wynwood property for the good of all. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Whitfield Leland is our next speaker, and I saw him standing. Oh, there he is, found a seat. Whitfield Leland, speaking on items 902 and 904 in your agenda, Commissioner.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Whitfield Leland. I'm not going to speak on 902, but very briefly, though. With the Lamont thing, I totally agree with what Stanley said all the way. That's how I'm going to leave that. But with 13, with the, I got an issue with this service agreement for management and operational parking service garage at Cascade. Have all y'all looked at, have y'all really looked at this agreement? No, no, I'm so serious. Have y'all really looked at this agreement? So, and this is what frustrates me, because, I mean, if this is, if this garage is going to be used, which I really don't think it's going to be to be used, which I really don't think it's going to be used for the purpose of the park itself, only because of the sub-agreements that they're going to make with the tenants of the, the car, the, uh, the apartments that's in the area, but when we look at this, and if I wanted to come to Cascade and I wanted to stay for an hour to park in a garage that the citizens' money is supposed to pay for through the CRA, which you borrowed $4 million from, I got to pay a dollar, $2. Any time after that is $2. If I lose my ticket, it costs me $25 to get out of damn garage I helped put here. I, I just don't see how we can ask people to utilize the space that we're creating for them and still charge them crazy fees. To come to y'all meeting, I got to pay $3 to get out of here, because I'm parked across the street. I think that's ridiculous. I don't mind paying a dollar, but to come over here and talk to y'all about my community I got to pay to park, that's crazy. And I really don't think that none of y'all looked at this. I really don't think that none of y'all looked at that, because if y'all could tell me y'all looked at this, and y'all still gonna, didn't pull this shit, hey, you let, let me talk, sir. That's, it's crazy, man. And, 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 and that's just frustrating to me, man, because I can't, in my community, I cannot pro, I cannot, I can't promote Cascade to send people in my community to Cascade when I know that they're going to be charged to pay a fee that they barely probably even even got. So, I mean, y'all really need to look at that, man, and I really, and I, to be honest, I think that all, I know y'all rely on staff a lot.
You're at two and a half minutes.
It's, it's nothing wrong with going behind them to make sure that us citizens and the citizens of this community can be able to use the space, not a group of citizens, but all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please, Mr. Clerk.
Mayor, on Item 1202, which is an ordinance relating to rezoning at Micasuki and North Blairstone Road, Gary Hunter is here. I believe he is here to answer questions if you have them, but I wanted to be sure I gave you that information at, at this point. And, and with that, that's the last speaker that we have in person, so we'll move to those who are connected online, and we will take them in the following order. First is Erin Solagastoa on, on that Item 1202. Erin Solagastoa, if I got that right.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Name and address for the record, please.
Erin Solagastoa, 1616 Coolacre Drive. I've lived at this address for 17 years and in Tallahassee for 30 years. Very concerned about the proposal to rezone the northeast corner of Micasuki and Blairstone, and particularly the possibility of. For 17 years and in Tallahassee for 30 years. Putting up a gas station and a convenience store there, which we have within, we have four within a half mile radius of that corner. We don't need another convenience store or gas station. Really worried about the light noise pollution and the environment as well. There are wetlands right behind that piece of property and across the street under, behind the county facility and going all the way up north Blairstone, so it would not be good for the wildlife or the water. But it would also be detrimental to public safety. I think it would exacerbate dangers of pulling out onto Micasuki Road, which are already a problem, increase traffic and make it even more difficult, and make it less safe to wa, to walk and bike in that area. And it will introduce harmful chemicals that are very bad for public health. Currently, I can smell diesel fumes coming from the county facility in the mornings when the trucks are gassing up. Fortunately, it only lasts usually for about a half an hour. I can stay inside and close my windows. However, if we had a gas station at that corner, it would be possibly 24/7. Many, many people suffer from chemical sensitivities and would be harmed by those kinds of fumes being in the environment on a regular basis. Diesel in particular is very, very bad for health. OSHA says workers exposed to diesel exhaust face the risk of health effects ranging from irritation of eyes, nose, and head, and headaches to respiratory disease and lung cancer. The American Cancer Society says lab studies have shown that diesel exhaust causes changes in cell DNA, which are usually needed for cancer to develop. And several studies have found that long-term heavy exposure to diesel exhaust can cause lung cancer in lab animals such as rats. The International Agency for Research on Cancer, which is part of the World Health Organization, says, classifies diesel engine exhaust as carcinogenic to humans.
You have 20 seconds.
Environmental Protection Agency. I could go on, but the point being, we do not need, also, it's not a commercial neighborhood. All other four corners of that area are offices. All the other gas stations are located in more commercial areas with restaurants and shops, not residential neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Kirsten Olson, speaking on Item 1202 and 1303. Kirsten Olson is next, to be followed by Marsha Turner.
Olson, are you with us?
Yes, I am. Hang on just a sec. Getting.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, it's, sorry, I was away from my desk. Kirsten Olson, and there we go, 1225 Talbot Avenue. And I wanted, first of all, to thank all of you for all your hard work and your staff that you do for the neighborhoods of Tallahassee. When Blairstone Road was built, its purpose was to provide, as I'm sure some of you remember, a crosstown road and reduce traffic. It was very controversial because it cut through neighborhoods and urban forest. According to clips from that time that I looked up in the Tallahassee Democrat, citizens received assurances from city leaders that only limited development would be allowed along the roadway. The Democrat said on the extension from Park Avenue to Centerville, which includes the lot we're talking about here, it was planned to be, quote, "an extraordinary boulevard with bikeways, sidewalks, landscaped medians, and buffers thick with thousands of trees." The article went on, "With such care in planning and design of the Blairstone extension, even the neighborhoods that have been wary about it will surely find the road a community enhancement and a pleasure to drive on." I live one mile from that corner, and I use it every day, and I appreciate the vision of those citizens and city leaders, because I find the road beautiful and a pleasure to drive on. Respectfully, I think a convenience store would tarnish that vision. Here's a picture of that lot, for those of you who may not be familiar with it. There are 12 convenience stores within, and gas stations within a two-mile radius of that site, and there are two that are less than a mile away, and heavily commercialized Capital Circle is less than a mile away. In my reading of the General Commercial District C2 zoning details, the C2 zoning emphasizes retail establishments, which I feel are incompatible with our neighborhoods and unnecessary because Capital Circle is so close. I would like to request that you rethink this zoning change and preserve the vision of beauty that was envisioned for Blairstone Road. While I was following this issue, I saw a change of views being considered for the Wine Wood Office Complex on the other end of Blairstone Road. I used to live near there, too. I guess I just love Blairstone Road. I know there's been a lot of discussion about adding affordable housing and supportive housing there, and I think there was going to be a discussion of this issue this summer. However, I looked at the plans, and most of the units I see in the Wine Wood plan are the size of hotel rooms at about 350 square feet. The average hotel room is about 330 square feet, and that's really small for a long-term residence or for a family, but I don't see in the plans any designated space or discussion if it's going to be used for not full-time, long-term housing.
You have a few seconds remaining.
Okay. While it's tempting to rush into repurposing a piece of property, I think more thought should go into what will be provided, who will be living at the property, and the supportive services that may need to be provided. Thank you for your time and attention, and again, thank you for everything you do for the city.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Next is Marsha Turner, followed by Janet Pichard. Marsha Turner, speaking on those same two items, 1202 and 1303.
Marsha Turner, are you with us?
I am. Can you hear me?
We can. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Marsha Turner. I live in, at 410 Terrace Street. I would refer to the proposed development on the corner of Micasuki and Blairstone. For those of you that can remember, way back in the 1990s, there was much concern, citizen outcry, and input over many, many, many years over the development of Blairstone Road itself. Although Kirsten and I did not collaborate on what we would say, we are both referencing the history of the design and development of the Blairstone Road extension. Back in 1995, citizens were very concerned about development along this corridor. They wanted assurances that it would be limited, and very little would be allowed in terms of commercial development, if any. And then the Democrat reported in August of 2001 that, it was actually 1978 that transportation planners identified the need to extend this road. Traffic, of course, in 2001 was a fraction of what it is and was on the groundbreaking ceremonies that were held in 2001. The article continued, "It will, this road will, however, be spared poor design. In fact, the studies, discussions, and near brawls over the years regarding environmental and aesthetic protection of the 3.1 mile projected roadway have resulted in plans for an extraordinary boulevard with bikeways, sidewalks, landscaped medians, and buffers thick with thousands of trees. With such care in planning and design of the Blairstone extension, even the neighborhoods that have been wary about it will surely find the road a community enhancement and a pleasure to drive on years down the road." Just think of it, 1978 to 2001, 23, 23 years of planning and design. We must honor that time and commitment. I respectfully submit no to the proposed rezoning of this area, no to another convenience store when there are dozens within the immediate area, no to losing those trees and greenery, no to gas storage tanks, no to all the concrete.
You have about 15 seconds left.
No to new dangerous entrances and exits on Blairstone and Micasuki, no to losing 32 potential dwelling units, and finally, no to this commercial development that would go against all the planning and careful design and what is now and should remain an extraordinary and beautiful boulevard through this section of our city. Thank you for your careful consideration of my remarks, and thank you for your good work.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Next is Janet Pichard, speaking on Item 1305, that's the lease termination agreement.
Hello, everyone.
Thank you. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Janet Pichard. My address is 2226 Victory Garden Lane.
Floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to thank the commissioners, in particular the city staff, both Wayne Tetter, Renetta Marshall, and Robert Culverhouse. We have been working very extensively on a lease. As most of you know, the Tallahassee City is looking to move the police station into the Northwood Center location, and the Tallahassee Ballet has two more years left on its lease. Unfortunately, this is a very difficult time for us to move because of the coronavirus and the impact. The Tallahassee Ballet has cut our budget by 80%, so it's very difficult for us to move at this time. Tallahassee Ballet has also, next year will be 50 years old. We're the only professional dance organization in Tallahassee. We have numerous outreach projects, and we have a very diverse staff and dancers. So we want to be good citizens, even though this is a difficult time. Myself and the city staff have worked very difficult situations to try to come to an agreement, and we have done that. The Tallahassee Ballet has found a new home, and I think that the proposal before you is, is fair for all of us, and I hope you will consider passing this agenda item so that the Tallahassee Ballet can move forward and the city can move forward in its demolition of the current Northwood Center. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, our next speaker.
Mayor, I have no additional speakers for this portion of our meeting. We do have speakers on unadjusted items, and we do have a couple for the public hearing. We will take those at the appropriate time.
Excellent. Last call. Anybody else that's here that'd like to speak on one of our agenda items?
I see a hand waving virtually. I don't know if that's to get your attention or not, Mayor.
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Please, which item would you like to speak on? I believe you're on mute, Ms. Turner. Ms. Turner, you are on mute.
On mute.
Now we can hear you, Ms. Turner.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. Sorry about that. I'd like to speak on the affordable housing proposal. I didn't realize I was supposed to speak on both at the same time.
Please, go right ahead.
Thank you. After reading all the materials provided and speaking to Karen Gemmenvill of the Growth Management Department, and Abena Otajia, Housing and Community Resilience Department, I now understand that the fore-proposed duplexes and the Wine Wood Office Complex retrofit to apartments will be truly affordable housing and follow the appropriate affordable housing guidelines related to cost per purchase of the duplexes and rental of the apartments. And my concerns have been allayed, and I congratulate the city on making sure those guidelines are associated with cost for both of those affordable housing initiatives. However, moving forward, it is my sincere recommendation that the commission makes the determination to develop a city ordinance with, with city management and departmental assistance covering process, development regulations, and exemptions for certified affordable housing projects based on organizational and public input. In this way, decisions regarding incentives and waivers will not be determined on a case-by-case basis, but rather on a formally approved city ordinance based on feedback from the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, neighborhood and business stakeholders through community meetings to receive feedback on ordinance language. Thank you so much for your time and attention. I appreciate everything that the commission is doing in reference to affordable housing for citizens in Tallahassee, and I hope you will move forward expeditiously with developing an ordinance for this purpose. Thank you so much.
Excellent. Thank you. That was our last speaker. We're now on the consent agenda. Mr. Manager, have any items been pulled off of the consent agenda?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Submit it up for discussion.
Move Consent, Mr. Mayor.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Signated by Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox. See no further comment? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. We are on City Commission Business 11.01. I believe that is the clerk.
Yes, sir, Mayor. This item is for your Tallahassee Leon County Minority Women and Small Business Enterprise Committee. Item seeks reappointment of two individuals, Brenda Williams and Wayne Mayo.
Move Acceptance.
Second. It's been properly moved by Commissioner Williams-Cox, signed by Commissioner Matlow. See no further comment? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. 11.02, Mr. Clerk.
Mayor and Commissioners, this item seeks reappointment of Ian Waldick to the Tallahassee Leon County Planning Commission. Leon County Planning Commission.
Move staff recommendations, Mayor.
Been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Williams-Cox. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. 11.03, Mr. Sutton.
11.03 requests the appointment of two new members to the city's Audit Committee. City Ordinance provides for the Audit Committee to have no less than three nor more than five members. Traditionally, there have been three members on the Audit Committee, and the addition of two new members will increase the Audit Committee's size to the maximum allowed by ordinance and will reduce the pressure to immediately fill vacancies when they occur. The increase in the number of members will enhance the diversity of thought, experience, and background on the committee. I'm requesting the appointment of Mr. Kevin McGeever and Ms. Felicia Small to the newly created seats four and five respectively. Both applicants are highly qualified, and each will bring a unique and diverse perspective to the committee. The recommendation is the appointment of Mr. McGeever and Ms. Small to the Audit Committee.
Thank you so much for the presentation.
Move acceptance.
Second. Been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Is there any comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. We are on the introduction of ordinance, 12.01. Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 12.01, introduction of ordinance number 21-0-18, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending Section 6 of the Charter of the City of Tallahassee to annex within the corporate area of the City of Tallahassee, Florida. Upon adoption of said ordinance, property being situated in Leon County, Florida, in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of Section 171.044 Florida Statute, providing for severability, conflicts, and an effective date, recommended action is Option 1, introduce ordinance number 21-0-18 and set the first and only public hearing for June 16, 2021, at 5:00 p.m. in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall.
The recommended option is simply to introduce the ordinance and set the public hearing for June 16, 2021. Is there any discussion or motions?
Move acceptance.
Second.
Been properly moved by Commissioner Williams-Cox, seconded by Commissioner Porter. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes 40 with the Mayor Pro Tem out of chambers. 12.02, Madam Attorney.
Thank you. Item number 12.02 is introduction of ordinance number 21-Z-11. The introduction of this proposed ordinance was continued from April 7, 2021, City Commission meeting. An ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, designating and including additional territory as an end general commercial from office residential. The official zoning of the official zoning map, providing for conflicts and severability and provided an effective date, recommended action is Option 1, introduce ordinance number 21-Z-11 and set the first and only public hearing for May 12, 2021, at 5:00 p.m. in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall.
Recommended action is to simply introduce the ordinance and set the public hearing for May 12. Let's open it up for discussion and motions.
Move acceptance.
It's been properly moved by the Mayor, I mean, Mayor Pro Tem, excuse me, Commissioner Matlow, by Commissioner Williams-Cox. Is there a second to the motion? I will second the motion. Let's open it up for discussion. Commissioner Porter.
Well, I just want to acknowledge some of the comments that have been made tonight and some of the emails that I know that I've received about this item. I do have some concerns about it and the surrounding neighborhoods, but I, I just, do we have an update on, I mean, I know we postponed this item to this week before introducing it. Have we had any official contact? I read what the item says about kind of who we've spoken to, the surrounding neighborhoods. Have we been in touch with those associations directly?
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, Commissioner, we have, at least in part, the feedback that I received. ATN, which is one of our neighborhood organizations, indicated, I don't want to speak for them, and I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, but my understanding is that they were intending to provide feedback, and they would do so at the public hearing, and that would be the next step in the process. So, I would expect they would. I know they're informed, and the other organizations are informed, and we used our Neighborhood Affairs Group to make sure everybody was knowledgeable of this potential change.
Okay, thank you.
And Madam Attorney, let me state for the record, this is a quasi-judicial proceeding, correct?
That is correct.
Therefore, any ex parte communications, whether it's from the developer, representatives of the developer, or, am I correct in thinking, neighborhood groups, or anyone that reaches out directly to us on this particular item, just needs to be reflected in the record.
That's correct.
And so, the action tonight is simply setting the public hearing where we'll have the full discussion and the whole nine yards.
That's correct. Based on the factors that are in the code, you can evaluate it.
Sure. So, if this does proceed to move forward and we set the public hearing, just let me simply remind us that if you do have any conversations with the developers or the neighborhoods, let's keep notes so that we can report that for the record since it's quasi-judicial. Any other comments? All right. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. We are on policy formation and direction. 13.01, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me ask Renetta Marshall to come forward. I'll share some introductory comments, and we've got a brief presentation we would love to share with you, but specifically, we're asking for your approval for the creation of a City of Tallahassee Artful Infrastructure Program to showcase local art. You've heard about that in some, from some of the speakers earlier today. And this art not only highlights Tallahassee and the artists in Tallahassee, but it deters graffiti on traffic control boxes. Those are the kind of the tall, light tan boxes you see around town. We have about 350 of those at each intersection. We're also seeking your approval to appropriate, in this budget year, it would be right away relative to the timing, the question about timing, that $22,000 be appropriated in this year's budget to provide seed funding for the program. And the way this program is recommended is that those dollars be matched with private dollars, one-to-one in equal parts. I will say that about a year ago at this time, when we were getting very accustomed to Zoom and WebEx, I had a WebEx, I believe it was WebEx, with Mr. Peyton, Ms. Couch, and Ms. Marshall, I think Allison Ferris was with us as well, and, you know, they pitched the idea, we agreed to provide some seed funding for the pilot. I think the rest is history, that it was very successful. I think we've seen evidence of that. You have been at some of those unveilings, if not all of them, yourselves, and so we think this project certainly adds value to the City of Tallahassee, and we recommend your approval for that. I would love, Ms. Marshall has been, this is in her area because the traffic boxes, you know, who would have thought art and traffic boxes go together? But this is in our underground utilities and public infrastructure area, and I'd love for her to share just a few comments on this, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Marshall, before you begin, on a personal note, let me just say, it was an honor to join some of my colleagues, to recognize you and a few of your colleagues at lunch the other day for your professional leadership and all that you do. It was a great event, and very proud to work with you each and every day. Thank you. You have the floor.
I'm smiling under this mask.
Yes, ma'am. So are we.
Thank you, Mayor, City Commissioners, City Manager. It's my pleasure to be here today and talk about this exciting program, the Artful Infrastructure Program. You don't usually think of utility boxes, traffic boxes, as being good palettes for art, but they are. I am a repressed artist, so I am very excited to do this. You don't think about artistic engineers, it might be an oxymoron or something, but that does exist. So, with that, I have a very, very short presentation. We're going to talk about some previous infrastructure art projects. Even going before our conversation in 2020 with the pilot program, the City of Tallahassee implemented Artful Infrastructure. We're going to talk about that as far as the Gainesville revitalization, talk about the very successful Art of the Box Pilot Project that we did with KCCI. Such great support, that was a wonderful, wonderful example. And then, we're going to build on that with the Artful Infrastructure Program. Just a little bit of brief history. When I think about traffic, traffic control boxes and art, it's that great nexus of functionality, reduced maintenance, supporting local artists, and just uplifting the quality of life. That's a great nexus for all of those things. And so, with the Gaines Street Revitalization Project, the city took advantage of that back in 2011, and you see the four boxes there. If I can draw your attention to the one on Brono, 2011 is on the left, 2021 today is what that looks like. And so, you can tell that these rats do last, they keep their vitality and their beauty. And also there, though it's not a traffic control box, there's the tree wall between Brono and Duval. That's a retaining wall to protect the, I think it's known as the poetry, beautiful oak tree, but it was turned also into a beautiful artful infrastructure example. To kind of fast-forward here to 2020, we partnered with KCCI, very, very good partners, oh my God, so excited, a lot of support from them. We provided seed funding or funding for $5,000, and there was also other funding that was provided by the DIA, another $3,000. And so, we were able collectively to wrap eight traffic control boxes, and those are just some of those examples right there. And I had the privilege to go to one of those unveiling, the College Avenue and Adam Street. So, again, great examples. And what this does as far as, I'll go from a UUPI perspective, there's less maintenance that we have to do on these boxes. So now, let's go to what's being proposed this evening. The Artful Infrastructure Program, that's a more encompassing, it includes traffic control boxes, but at some time in the future, we may want to expand that, maybe retaining walls, other type of infrastructure that we could use as art palette. It supports the strategic plan, the city's strategic plan, specifically the priority quality of life, to be a creative and inclusive community with beautiful public spaces that protect and promote resources and culture. I think those are great examples that support that. It establishes a cross-departmental team, so while UUPI manages and operates over 350 of these traffic control boxes, you know, we're not just doing this ourselves, we need communications to assist with that. It's a resiliency component of that, and also Parks and Rec and Neighborhood Affairs as we reach out to the various neighborhoods. Continues collaboration with external partners, that's very, very important. It's a public-private partnership, as mentioned by the city manager. Again, promotes community support and ensures you have that geographic representation. So, it builds on this great corridor plan that was established or identified by KCCI, and then goes further out into the city. So, we're excited. The recommendation is in the, is in your agenda packet, and here to take any questions.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right, let's open it up for discussion. It's a great agenda item. Any motions, discussion? Commissioner Richardson, then Mayor Pro Tem, and Commissioner Porter?
I would move Option Number One, as recommended by staff, Mr. Mayor, and say that I think this is an excellent project to introduce art into our community. One of the things that I talked to Shannon and Betsy about was the geographic representation, and interestingly enough, they had already beat me to the punch. They put one at the intersection, the one that was at the intersection of Asiola and Wanish Way. I passed that one every day, and I would smile and think, you know, how wonderful this was for our community, not knowing that it was already a part of this KCCI project. And so, I certainly would like to support this going forward and see us continue to partner with KCCI and other partners that might come to the table to ensure that this continues, but also is introduced, you know, throughout our community, and especially those neighborhoods that we're working with specifically to try to redevelop and revitalize. This would be excellent for them as well.
The motion for Option Number One, staff recommendation, has been made by Commissioner Richardson. I will second the motion myself. Mayor Pro Tem, and then Commissioner Porter, and then Commissioner Williams-Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, great work, Ms. Marshall. You know, it's just always exciting to see, you know, the city getting public art into public spaces. It adds tremendous value to our whole community for a little, for little cost. I want to thank the KCCI team. I think y'all followed me from COCA to DIA to City Commission, so I've seen the presentation a few times, but great work, you know, outstanding job so far, excited to see it come to fruition. Commissioner Richardson, I wanted to ask, there was a comment made about trying to get a deadline to get this done by the end of the year, and we're specifically on the KCCI corridor projects. Would you be amenable to the first portion of this, helping them complete their project?
Absolutely. It's friendly amendment.
Yes, great, thank you.
Amendments accepted. Do you want to provide comment as well?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. In fact, with your approval, I don't believe there's any time constraints. I think this could travel a very quick process. I think the call for the artwork, but we stand ready to move as fast as possible. So, that's certainly achievable to get this done.
Excellent. Commissioner Porter?
What exactly was the friendly amendment?
Establishing a timeline.
Okay, okay. One thing that, and I'm totally supportive, I'm really excited, one thing that I heard from Betsy is that placemaking week is actually September, and I don't know if that's something that we could work towards, that might be, I don't know really how long this is going to take, but I know that part of the concept is doing something like a walking tour, and if we could have a big unveiling would be, I think, really fun. I did have a question about the placement of the boxes, because I know that of the 22 boxes that KCCI has identified, at least seven of those are slated to be replaced and so are not a good option to be wrapped. That leaves us about 15, and then, some of them, the item says, they're owned, maintained by the city, but either owned by FDOT or Leon County. Are those included, we're talking about the 22 boxes there, or are those other boxes?
The 22 that are identified, those are the ones that were identified to be city-owned.
Okay, so those are all city-owned.
Yes, there is a total of 38, and the remainder of those are either in county or DOT right of way, but the city maintains all of those boxes.
All of them, okay.
And so, the city, the city would need to coordinate, would also coordinate with both of the county as well as DOT.
Okay, so is it, I guess my question is, is it our intent, to the best of our ability, to sort of follow this pathway and prioritize the 15 boxes that remain that have been identified by KCCI?
I think that, I think that certainly can be incorporated, that corridor, but I think it also gives us an opportunity to expand.
Right.
And look at other areas. For example, and the commission is aware of this, we're going to be going to the opening, the ribbon cutting for FAMU Phase 3. There is a traffic control box that's right there where FAMU Phase 3 connects with Lake Bradford. I couldn't think of a better place, and I think we've had some preliminary discussions. So, we're going to use the corridor, and certainly, the seven won't be, the seven that are going to be replaced aren't good, aren't good candidates to be wrapped, but I think using that as a baseline and then seeing other areas.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, seeing no further comment, all those in favor for the motion on the table as amended, state aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. We are on item number 13.02. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, sir. Item 1302 and 1303 really have a natural connection, and I will tee this up, and with your indulgence, I think we could roll seamlessly almost from 1302 to 1303. Abeno Ojatayo is going to provide the presentation. These items involve, start with the Community Land Trust, an update, that's been in motion for about a year. We want to provide you that progress update, and there's some action items that are recommended in 1303 that are related. You've heard about some of that in some introductory comments from the public. We think these recommendations make a lot of sense. In fact, I asked for some information. I was surprised by the number of projected affordable housing units that seem to be on the radar. In fact, at numerous occasions, you as the city commission and at different times as CRA have said, hey, you know, we want to move, we want to move, this has been a priority, a strategic priority, and we know sometimes things take a bit to build and grow and then to reach inertia, and I just wanted to share this, that we have on the radar upwards of about 1,000 affordable housing units that are proposed in our community. They are in various states, from under construction, the Lafayette Street Apartments, next to the moon, you know about that one, that's under construction. Another project that's permitted, is finished permitting, yet to begin construction, is 110 units at Magnolia Oaks in the one hundred and ten units at Magnolia Oaks in the similar area. Currently in permitting, another one hundred and thirty units at the Magnolia Family Project, similar area. We've heard today, and one of the actions we're asking you to take is to do a density, an exemption related to allowable density for the Wine Wood Project, which is nearly four hundred and fifty units proposed. We also have another one hundred and thirty units in the CRA Frenchtown that are under review, and we have high interest in one hundred and eighty-one units for three thousand one hundred Appalachian Parkway that are characterized as workforce units. So we really are seeing a lot of momentum on this. I wanted to take a moment to highlight it, because this surprised me even, and just get that inventory out there. And I apologize, I know I've stepped all over Abena and Karen, but I think this is important to highlight, to just kind of get a thumbnail sketch of the kind of action and activity we see. At this time, I'll ask Abena to share the update on the agenda item. It may not be turned on.
How about now?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you so much, and it's no problem at all. The information you provided, City Manager, is excellent, and I think it is helpful for us to appreciate that things take time, but when they do, they start moving. And so we're excited to give you on thirteen point oh-two, an update on the Community Land Trust, which was just about a year ago that this commission approved for us to move forward in partnership with the county to get this started. So we thought it would be a good time, as we start to ease back into hopefully normal operations, to just give you an update on where we are with that. You may remember that this recommendation for Community Land Trust dates as far back as two thousand and seventeen, when there was a joint working group made up from city and county representatives to discuss affordable housing. Since that time, there's been a lot of research and planning, and there was an RFP that was issued to select a community partner. And that partner that was selected and you approved back in March is the Tallahassee Lenders Consortium. So I want to thank them, Karen Miller, who's Executive Director, and Lynn Hardy, who's one of the development directors. They're all joining us virtually via WebEx, and so if you have difficult questions, I might toss it back to them. But they've been a great partner, especially as we navigate what works with the city and what also works for the county government. They've been able to think through and anticipate a lot of things. And so today, I'll give a brief update, because it dovetails into the next item, I won't linger too long, but I will certainly be able to answer any questions that you have. I want to thank you for making affordable housing a priority, and we've codified it in your strategic plan for two thousand and twenty-four. In particular, we've set an objective to facilitate the construction of new units through the land trust, and our target by two thousand and twenty-four is thirty-five units. And so part of what is contemplated about our partnership is to work very closely with the land trust in these inaugural years, to get them set up to be successful way beyond our initial investment. What this slide summarizes is just a quick refresher, and perhaps for the benefit of those that are in the audience, a community land trust is just one tool that we have in our toolkit for affordable housing. It is a process whereby the land is held perpetually affordable and is owned by the land trust, but new development is leased to the new owner. And this way, we preserve the cost of the housing units to be affordable. We allow the owners to share equity, they do earn equity as they purchase a home in the land trust, but a portion of that equity is shared with the land trust, so they have resources to continue their operations as well. The land trust is really a good model for long-term homeownership, which is just one area that we know we need to focus on, but it can also include rental or multifamily developments as well. So what you approved last year, and what we worked to finalize, is an agreement with the lenders consortium that stipulates several things. One, we agreed that the city and the county would convey property to the land trust by sale or donation. We also said, as I've said just shortly, we have to preserve the affordability in perpetuity, and that shows up in the stipulation as at least a ninety-nine-year lease for every sale transaction that happens in the land trust. We've also specified that the units must be sold or rented to low and moderate income, and that's about eighty percent AMI or below for all the clients that are served in this program. We also authorized about fifty-eight thousand dollars for a line of credit, just for the initial year of administration that TLC was able to have access to. And as many opportunities as we have, we will explore resources to help with the actual construction cost. Again, as we start with these initial projects, the goal is that the land trust can be self-sustained in the future years, but we typically explore our state funding and our federal funding as opportunities to invest in the construction of the units.
Excellent.
So, this year, the land trust has spent the majority of the time becoming certified through the Florida Housing Coalition, and this has been a really critical step. It's not that sexy, and you won't hear much about it behind the scenes, but this is what ensures that our program is well-vetted, it is certified by our partners at Florida Housing, and they can trust that the processes will be secured and that we are using the best tools available to us. And so this slide just summarizes, and your agenda also details it, all the various steps that they're going through, and we're really pleased with TLC, they're near the finish line, and we're expecting that certification to be announced in the coming months. And every year, they will go through a recertification as well to make sure that they're continuing with best practices. This slide summarizes Missing Middle, or highlights an opportunity that we think is a really great one for the land trust. By design, the land trust would receive land that's donated and will typically be most appropriate for infill development. And so what that means is, without large parcels of land to do major developments, most of the developments are going to be smaller scale, they're going to be fitting in in existing neighborhoods. And so we find that the land trust presents a really good opportunity to build more units while still being compatible and respectful of the nearby surroundings. Missing Middle just says you have the traditional single-family, that's what we know and everybody can sort of relate to, and then when you think of multifamily, you might think high-rise apartments. But there's a wide swath of everything in between that can really be much more compatible with existing units. And so what the land trust has been exploring is how we can get to, not just our target thirty-five by two thousand and twenty-four, but in the future years, maximizing every lot that is conveyed to them, so they can get as many units as possible. And so for this inaugural year, what is planned begins on four lots that were donated by the Leon County Government, and on those lots, if we are able to maximize it in a respectful way, we think we can get nine units total on that. This will be a mix of single-family detached and duplexes, and all of those designs are started already, two variations of different floor plans that will be available. We understand from the lenders consortium that they're hoping to break ground in May, at least on the one that is the easiest one, and the ones that require a little bit more flexibility, as I'll describe in the next agenda item. Pending your approval, they'll get started on that right away. And so commissioners, for this item, we're simply asking you to accept the Community Land Trust update.
Director Ojatayo, you're doing an amazing job. I am thoroughly enjoying working with you as representative on the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. Very excited about what we have done, where we are, and where we're heading, and I really do appreciate your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's open it up for any questions. Yes, Commissioner Richardson, Commissioner Porter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, first of all, want to say I am extremely proud to represent the City Commission on the Board of the Tallahassee Lenders Consortium. We had a meeting earlier today, and this was part of our discussion. I'm very proud that we have made this a top priority for our city and for our community, because what it does is several things. Well, first of all, Mr. City Manager, I wanted to add to your numbers that you talked about, because based on an email we received from the Frenchtown CDC, it looks like they're contemplating maybe a hundred units on Orange Avenue, just east of the roundabout at Jim Lee Road. So that's, could potentially be another hundred added to the total. But what this does is make what we have always heard of as the American dream, homeownership, affordable to so many more people. Because of the rise in the cost of housing in our community, so many of our neighbors, so many of our residents are locked out of achieving that American dream. It also increases, or I think has contributed to the increase that we've seen in some of the homelessness that we experience in our community as well. The other thing that it does, and we hear this a lot, is that it affords those families the opportunity to begin to build generational wealth. Homeownership, property ownership allows for the accumulation of generational wealth that parents can pass on to their children, and their children to their children. I'm proud of the fact that my wife and I, twenty-five years ago, built a home that's now worth, on the market, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's money that will go towards, you know, whenever God feels fit to take my wife and I home, that will be money available for our children to hopefully invest and continue that process. So it does that. And also what we're doing here, making homeownership available, homeownership available, and maintaining that in perpetuity, it addresses the boogeyman, the eight-hundred-pound elephant in the room of gentrification. You know, it's interesting, my wife and I and my family took a vacation to Charleston, South Carolina recently, and one of the things that was shocking to me was that one of the tour guide that we went on the tour with said that Charleston, South Carolina used to be sixty percent African-American. Today, it is seventeen. Yes, one-seven percent African-American, and that has occurred because of gentrification. There are homes in Charleston, South Carolina that are selling from two million, yeah, two million to fifteen million dollars in that community. And of course, you know, in most instances, people of color can't afford that kind of housing, and they've been pushed out into the outer limits. They've also done some, they've also brought some of the surrounding communities into the city that has contributed to that as well. But that's always one of the things that I want to consider as we have moved forward, and I think this addresses that, Abena, and so thank you all for that as well. I think we can be the model for the rest of the country, because we're seeing that happen in cities and towns, not only in the state of Florida, but across our country in terms of gentrification and what it's doing to neighborhoods of color. And so I think what we're doing here addresses that issue as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Porter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank you, Abena, and our community partners. I'm really excited to see this move forward.
Commissioner Porter, would you like to make a motion to accept?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to accept staff update.
Reckon.
Number one, signed by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. Thirteen point oh-three, Mr. Manager?
And we'll flow seamlessly into this one, Mr. Mayor. We're asking for your approval of some development exemptions to effectuate three projects related to the Community Land Trust and the Wine Wood Project. Abena Ojatayo and Karen Jemmenville from Growth Management will lead this discussion.
Hello again. Commissioners, you have consistently prioritized affordable housing, and you've challenged us to be creative and explore all options. I know that every time an idea comes before you, one of the, some of the responses we hear is more, let's do more, let's get it built faster, and we take it to heart, and I think the rest of the community is taking it to heart, too, as you've heard from the city managers, rundown of some of the numbers, there are partners that are willing to work with us. And so this agenda item highlights those three strategic objectives that we think we can really start to find some alignment with some projects that are in the pipeline. We set a target to facilitate the construction of new units, but also converting vacant units. You have the foresight to outline that as a potential, and I don't think anybody anticipated the pandemic, but that has created some new opportunities to explore adaptive reuse. We also, of course, want to continue to support the Community Land Trust, as you've heard in the update, and we also have an objective to increase residential density within the city limits. And so those three things are what are spurring us on as we consider the projects that are before you for this item. I mentioned the Missing Middle opportunity. This slide just shows you a sample of the elevation that the Community Land Trust is considering. Part of the beauty of Missing Middle housing is, it is intended to blend in into the community. It is blended in with the nearby properties, but fits the scale and the form of what could happen in any particular zone. And so the elevation shows you just that example, and quickly, what the land trust is proposing is on four parcels to use duplexes to generate eight units. That's the increase that we can do with the flexibilities that are described in your agenda item. I'm probably skipping over something I should have said. I want to make sure that you know Karen Jemmenville is going to add more about the technical parts of our growth management, which I won't, but I want to share on the exciting part of how we're trying to make sure we achieve our target units. The other project, the fourth one on the list for consideration, is the adaptive reuse of a vacant office complex, which is at Wine Wood. And initially, the conceptual plan contemplates using five of those office buildings to generate as much as four hundred and forty rental units. You know that the land trust by design has to be affordable. The developers of this project are very keen on making the rental rates for this affordable as well, and in our early conversations, they're looking at rates that are affordable to sixty percent, eighty percent AMI. What that translates to is somebody who is making a living wage fifteen dollars an hour salary can afford a unit. Most of them would be studio units and one-bedroom apartments, but there would also be two-bedroom apartments, starting around six hundred and twenty-five dollars a month, and moving up to just under twelve hundred dollars. So this is exciting. We typically don't have that many units, new units, that come into the housing stock at those rates, and we're really looking forward to doing this project. We're also excited about adaptive reuse, because it takes advantage of vacant units. It is environmentally sustainable to reuse and to recycle buildings that are already here. It presents some cost savings for the community and for the developers as well, instead of tearing down or building a brand-new building. And of course, it brings some revitalization opportunities as well for a corridor based on those vacancies. We have summarized what the request and the flexibilities needed for these projects to move forward in your agenda item. And before I get in there, I want to introduce Karen Jemmenville from our Growth Management, who will walk us through what the process typically is and what we are proposing, in addition to your acceptance of these flexibilities, a process whereby we can continue to vet and present to you projects that are going to meet your strategic objectives, but also serve our community well as quickly as we possibly can.
Dr. Jemmenville, before you start, it was also, you were part of that amazing panel that we honored at lunch the other day. You were one of the experts in your field, and it was great to be there, and thank you for everything you do for the city and for your leadership.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager, this slide just shows a few examples of some of the affordable housing incentives that are authorized in the state of Florida under statute. The orange boundary hits the highlights of some of the incentives that we already provide in the city of Tallahassee. We provide expedited permitting, certain development, construction fee waivers, some density bonus, we provide accessory dwelling units, and we do an inventory of city lots that are suitable for affordable housing. These incentives here on the list that are from the Florida statutes, they serve as the basis for AHAAC's annual review of the city's affordable housing policies, and then they subsequently make recommendations each year in terms of how we can improve and create initiatives to encourage more affordable housing. In addition to these incentives, last year, the state legislature passed a law that provides local governments with some additional flexibility in the approvable of affordable housing projects, and it gives the city additional authority to waive certain land development regulations for affordable housing projects. And the four waivers that Abena touched on, that we're bringing to you for recommendation for approval tonight, those are being requested under the authority of this new Florida statute that was enacted last year. And the legislation really gives us local government broad authority to define the scope and the process for these types of waivers. So what we'd like to do now is research some of the regulatory barriers and local government best practices in terms best practices in terms of encouraging and incentivizing affordable housing. We would like to engage the AHAC Committee and get neighborhoods involved and other stakeholders and get their feedback as we develop a draft ordinance that we can bring back for your consideration, that provides a more defined structure for how this process would work in the future for projects that come forward, what that includes, the final review authority body, you know, public notice, things like that. We'd like to get your permission to go engage the community, initiate that ordinance, and then have us come back to you with a recommendation for how this could work in the future.
Thank you, Dr. Jemmenville.
So with that, we'd like to recommend option one.
So this is a very exciting agenda item, and just thank you, everybody on the team, for your hard work. This is how we move the needle in this community in regards to affordable housing. And let's open it up for discussion, and Commissioner Williams-Cox.
I am, first of all, let me just say thank you to you, you guys and your team. I'm very excited about this because one of the things that we've talked about when dealing with our homelessness situation is that we don't have enough units. And here's a way to get some additional units, to help those who may find themselves there, but to also help others who may have been on the way not get there. And so I think that this is a very creative and innovative way to get there. Having worked in the Wynwood Center some years ago, it is a beautiful piece of property with the pond in the middle. It's just very serene, and it's in a place that's surrounded by kind of light structures. And I too live in Indian Head, Ramona's my neighborhood president, and so she speaks for all of us. It does about our neighborhood, and I think that this would be a good use of that space. And it's not like we're taking, we would be taking, taking space away, it's already there. And so from Miami, welcome to our community. And we, I would want to encourage others to, let's do the same kind of thing, to let's get us some affordable housing units. And when I was on the Planning Commission, one of the things that, and I represented the Planning Commission on the Affordable Housing Committee, and one of the things that we said is that when you take a house away, affordable house out of inventory, you need to replace it. So here's a way that we can, we can do that and kind of make our community whole. And I really like this. I like the turning of the dirt, where we need to turn dirt, but where we just need to knock some walls out, keep the structure and do some things on the inside, I think that this is a great way to do that, and I'm looking forward to having some new neighbors. Thank you.
Would you like to make a motion for option one?
I would like to make a motion to move option one.
Second.
And then second by Commissioner Richardson. Commissioner Richardson for comment.
Just a quick question, Mr. Mayor, for Karen. Karen, does this option address the recommendation that you're asking for in terms of this addresses that?
Yes, sir, it does. Option one includes both the approval of the project waivers and the recommendation to move forward with the ordinance.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. Any further comment? Mayor Protim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for your hard work. You know, I always get excited about reusing old structures and old buildings. I had a couple of questions I just wanted for clarification. Somebody asked me what the definition of certified affordable housing was in relation to this agenda item?
Sure. So the city does have a process of vetting projects that want to usually get access to different incentives or to be recognized as an affordable housing project. There are some projects that go on and through permitting that we may never hear about, and we might learn about it later. So not every project that is affordable to low and moderate income households goes through our process. What our process is, is when we receive a project idea and the concept, we ask that the developers explain what the breakdown of their units are, whether it's multifamily, single-family, whether it's ownership or rental. And when we look at the price breakdown, we try to ensure that the majority of those units are serving households that would be between the 60% and 80% AMI. There is a certain level of good faith that comes with it because a project may seek that certification at a very early stage, as we see with the Wynwood Project. And there are others that are much further along that have very detailed pro forma and sort of their architectural drawings. We look forward to working with developers at any stage of that project. Once they do, the certification allows them to go through expedited permitting through Growth Management, so we alert our partners and our colleagues on that side that this project is a priority, and they expedite it based on their needs for development. If there's a water and sewer connection fee, that process also designate them as eligible for that waiver, and they can get up to $150,000 off of that water and sewer waiver. That is, those are the main incentives that are available, and as Karen pointed out, there's a world of other possibilities, we just don't have all of them codified in terms of what is conferred to a certified affordable housing project. And so this process will hopefully allow us to bring it all together under one solid umbrella and provide the menu of options to those projects.
Awesome. I think, thank you, thank you for that clarification. And my other question, Karen, would be on, I see the staff comments on the duplexes. Has Wynwood gone through that process yet, or are they in the early stages?
Wynwood has also gone through the pre-submital process, so they've gotten their preliminary staff comments.
Okay. And for what we're approving today, the waivers for the density only, or are there other waivers as well?
The waivers are described in Attachment One. There's a chart that has the summary of development waivers for each project.
Okay.
And I can go through those if you'd like me to.
For Wynwood, from the chart, I just see density.
Yeah, for, I'm sorry, for Wynwood, it's only density, yes. The duplexes have a few other waivers.
Okay. Thank you, no, that was, those are my only questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Commissioner Williams-Cox.
I also wanted to mention, Abena, I've received some questions via comments, and I know that I forwarded those to you. In case the person is listening, I wanted to make sure that I acknowledge that you have those in your possession and you will be drafting a response.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Excellent. There's a motion on the table for staff recommendation that was made by Commissioner Williams-Cox, signed by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. Before we move to the next item, Ms. Jackson, Attorney Jackson, you were the third member of that panel. The other two have spoken, and I wanted to recognize you as well as being one of the top 3% municipal attorneys in the state of Florida, and we're lucky to have you as our own. We are on, and by the way, colleagues, we have five more items. We have two updates, two action items, and a discussion. I believe we could probably get through the majority of this before our public hearing at 5:00. Of course, if we don't complete our business, we will come back after the public hearing. We're on item number 13.04, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, sir. Rob McGar, our General Manager of Electric and Gas, is joining us via WebEx. I'll ask that he be pulled up now. Frankly, I can't think of a better meeting to bring this update to you. We all know tomorrow we will celebrate and recognize Earth Day, and our staff has been working methodically and deliberately and quickly toward the creation of our EV charging program so that we can help expand the number of electric vehicles in our community. We are asking for your approval to buy 16 charging stations that will be put in the Cascades, New Cascades Garage. They could be in service as early as late summer. In addition, we want to provide you an update on the progress of the standalone stations that we will build around our community that will create uniform access for everybody to be able to charge their vehicles. Rob is going to share a presentation that will help with some visual of where we're talking about, and certainly pleased to answer any questions and ask for your approval of both option one and option two of this item.
Ms. McGar.
Rob, you're on mute still.
Oh, am I?
Good, you're good.
Okay. Mayor, Commissioners, and City Manager, I appreciate the opportunity to share with you where we are with the EV charging stations. As the manager noted, we are, we are working on the standalone charging stations that you authorized us to move forward with last year. We've been looking for sites that we can co-locate at where customers or users of the EV charging stations can have other activities, retail outlets, restaurants, et cetera, in order to have something to do while their car is charging. The stars on this map give you a feel for some of the site locations we're looking at. A number of them are co-located with other, they're all co-located with other retail outlets, and we're working with, as we noted in the agenda item, Publix on a potential joint use agreement if we ultimately accept those sites. So that work is going forward. We've got an engineering firm that's doing some site review of the various sites to make sure there's no constructibility issues on those sites. The other area we're moving forward with is the garage installations, with the first one being Cascades Garage that's opening later this month, early next month. We want to move forward with getting 16 Level 2 chargers for the Cascades Garage and get it installed. It'll look something similar to this type of installation that I'm showing in the picture there, where customers can drive up and using an app or their smartphone, they'll be able to register, plug their vehicle in, and get it charged while they are at the hotel, in the offices, or at Cascades. So I mentioned, we're looking at having an app. The charging system that we're recommending to go forward with has an app that folks that have electric vehicles and do charging use this app in other locations to help them find charging stations and do the commercial arrangement to buy the charging time and pay for it. So it'll all be done with a smartphone or through an app, very, in a very convenient manner with the, for the customer and user. We are asking permission to move forward with purchasing the charging equipment from ChargePoint and Guardian Fueling through a competitively bid process called Sourcewell. It's a national procurement cooperative that gives us access to this equipment on a competitive basis. It also ties, allows us to tie in with some other charging equipment that's been purchased at various city locations as we've done the greater penetration of electric vehicles of the city's fleet. With that, I'm available to answer any questions you might have on the recommendations or the program in general.
Thank you for this great item. Yes, sir? Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, I also want to add, and we did not include a star on there, but the South City Transit location, we would also look to add car charging there. We've talked about that in the past, that that's also another area we're exploring.
You must have been reading my mind, you know, I didn't see that star in the right spot.
That's where, that one should be on there as well. Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a few questions. So I know that at some point we were considering, I had the same thought I think others were having about the location of some of these. There's not a lot, you know, in the south side of this town and/or in black communities. I know at some point we were considering the Famu Way and Lake Anita Favors Thompson electric vehicle charging stations. Do you have any update on kind of why we moved on from that? Are they, are we still considering those locations?
Let me ask Rob to address that.
Yeah, Commissioner, that is one of the sites that's been on the list. I don't remember the specific reason why it was not moved to the next step. I believe it was accessibility and parking, limited parking there because you don't want to have the charging stations blocked by someone that is just parking there to access the other amenities of the park. But I can go back and get with our team and confirm that, and we can get that information back to you.
Okay, thank you. I'm really excited about this. I think it's so cool and important that we are investing in our future, and this is certainly the way of the future. The only thing that I just want to make sure that we're considering is, you know, there's nothing in our downtown, there's nothing in our black community, so just not everyone shops at Publix. Just making sure that we're as thoughtful as possible about, you know, the access and the infrastructure that we're, that we're investing in. So I mean, I would like to make a, I don't know if we have other comments, but I would make a motion to accept staff recommendation and definitely encourage us to consider the other locations like Famu Way and Lake Alberta.
Staff, staff recommendation has been made by Commissioner Porter for option number one, option number two. Seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Commissioner Richardson, you recommend?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question for the City Manager. Mr. City Manager, you and I talked about at one point the potential for, and it's a related issue, it's not on this issue specifically, but it's related, offering a rebate like we do for the appliance rebate for individuals purchasing electric cars as maybe an incentive for that. Have you had a chance to discuss that with staff?
Yes, sir, Commissioner, and thank you for that question. So it's related but slightly different, and I think you and I talked about it. It's a great question, how do we incentivize the purchase of electric vehicles? Clearly, we're trying to support the charging of electric vehicles, and what we are exploring now is incentivizing the charging stations at homes. That will be an essential piece of this equation that can be costly, and so we think that could work well and naturally dovetails with our electric and gas utility, and it's the kind of incentive we think we can make. We're exploring that as we speak. Yes, sir, thank you for that question.
All right.
Excellent. Motion on the table for option number one and option number two, staff recommendation by Commissioner Porter, signed by Commissioner Richardson. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. We're on item number, we're on item number 13.05.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a presentation, but I could just introduce this and defer it to you and the Commission if you would like more detail. We have, staff has worked on this item for some time, as Tallahassee Ballet does have two years remaining on their lease at the Northwood Mall, they're in the newer section of the buildings, if you will. We are moving to demolish the older section. It would take quite a bit of work and investment to retain that last remaining piece of the building, which is the old Publix building. And so staff has worked hand in glove with the ballet to make sure that we have been fair and that the project fits and makes sense for the city. We are seeking your approval to authorize $383,647 for the ballet for relocation and other related expenses. This is based on methodology related to their move and other costs, and we believe this is in the best interest of everybody. Renetta Marshall has led this charge, her and her team, and she has a presentation if you would like, like to share it.
Would we like the presentation or go into discussion on this item?
I'm ready for discussion.
I'm ready to, yeah.
Is there a motion on the table?
I move acceptance of staff recommendation.
Probably move by Commissioner Williams-Cox, signed by Commissioner Richardson. Renetta, thank you so much for being prepared, but I think we're moving forward.
Thank you, Renetta.
Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor. I get all choked up over you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. Item number 13.06, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, sir. Christian Doolin, our manager of, or Director of Strategic Innovation, he's joining us via WebEx if he could be pulled up. He's going to give a brief update. We're in that time of the year where we're providing legislative updates, there's a lot of activity, and frankly, there is a great deal of activity at the federal level, which is a little bit unusual. Great opportunities exist, but we're moving fast. And so I'd like just to take, if we can, a couple of minutes and have Christian provide a verbal update on where we stand. Of course, you have information in your agenda packet. So with that, Christian, will you provide us an update on where we are today?
Thank you, Manager, Mayor, and Commissioners. It's my pleasure to be here, sorry I couldn't be in the room. Since my last update and the update in the item, some great news. The House last weekend adopted the Senate's posture on our tempo request for funding. So that is, that is now funded $250,000 in both the House and Senate budgets. And for this, I want to acknowledge all of the support we've been given by our local delegation, Senator Osley, Representative Tant Shof Alexander. Today, budget conference is still going. The legislature is beginning to address the use of federal ARP funds in the state budget, and as part of those federal funds, the House and the Senate today agreed to add an additional $2 billion into the DOT's five-year work plan. So we'll be actively engaged around those conversations to see where So we'll be actively engaged around those conversations to see where we can be positioned. And it also looks like the committee process is going to end. It will be completed today. On the federal level, as the, as the manager mentioned, and as Congress and federal agencies prepare for the implementation of these large bills, the federal, sorry, the American Rescue Plan, the American Jobs Act, and they begin to release specific guidance, the representatives, Representative Lawson, Representative Dunn, their offices have begun to reach out to us on quick turnaround requests, usually they're within days, with specific guidance on project submittals that we, we can be ready to deliver within a year or so. And so really, we have been working to make sure we're responsive, positioned to respond to those and get our information together quickly. And we will continue to keep you engaged and be engaged with our local, our local federal delegation as those requests come forward. I'm here to answer any questions, and again, appreciate it, sorry I couldn't be there.
Christian, thank you for all your hard work during session. This is an information-only item. However, any questions for Mr. Doolin? Let's move on to the next item. We're on 13.07, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anna Guerra is staffing this item, and I'd like her to just provide a quick update. Since your last meeting this was brought up, you directed staff to come back with some more information related to municipal ID, our identification card program. We've gathered some information from various local governments around the state of Florida, and we've also included a national example. If I could just take a minute or two and have Anna walk through that information that we have, and we're looking for your direction on this item.
Thank you, City Manager. So as the City Manager said, this item came from your direction at the April 7th City Commission meeting when you requested more information on municipal ID card programs. Today, most service providers require IDs, individuals to show IDs in order to access services, which can be a barrier of entry to some vulnerable populations. In the last 10 years or so, some cities across the country have adopted their own municipal ID programs as an, as an alternative option to their citizens. This item covers a few elements of those programs, including the state landscape and some best-in-class examples. This item was an effort of multiple departments, including strategic innovation and legal. So as of now, in Florida, there are no state statutes regarding municipal ID programs, which means that the validity of the card really depends on the service provider's willingness to recognize it as valid. As of now, oh, I'm sorry. Additionally, Florida offers IDs to anyone over the age of five years old at local DMVs for a fee of $25. The requirements to get those cards are very similar to that of a driver's license, and various forms of identification or proof of residency are accepted. In this item, you will find several examples, one from Philadelphia and from three Florida cities that run similar programs. A few of these programs are used to offer residents a discounted rate on recreational And then others are just to provide their vulnerable populations with an additional identification source. In one Florida county, a nonprofit picked off a community ID program, and to ensure its value, they asked cities within the county and the sheriff's department to recognize it as valuable. So more details available on those case studies in the item, but each program is established to meet specific community needs, and the approach you take to establishing a program really depends on that service provider's goal. I'm available for any questions, and I look forward to your direction.
Anna, excellent presentation. Thank you. Commissioner Porter will come to you, you're the one that brought this item before us?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much, Anna, for the research that you did. And as a point of privilege, it's just good to work with you. Anna and I were classmates at the Ask You School of Public Administration, so it's always good to see you. I'm really excited about this item. In the past two weeks, I've had some conversations with some, some local stakeholders. Commissioner Williams Cox, you brought up the connection with the vaccinations, which is a huge incentive. Actually, just last night, the Broward County Commission approved a community ID program for similar reasons that we decided to move forward with it. I wanted to share just some, in some of the research that I did, actually, the Broward County Sheriff is sponsoring their community ID program and sent a letter of support, and I just wanted to read something really quickly from, from his letter of support. "A community ID would provide cardholders with a reliable form of ID that can be used as a tool by law enforcement, county departments, health centers, schools, businesses, and cultural art organizations to better identify and serve, and serve residents. Community ID programs have improved public safety in multiple jurisdictions in Florida and across the nation." It's also being supported by the Miami Dade Chief of Police. Some of the, some of the people who specifically can benefit from it are not only, you know, I think for a lot of us, we take for granted how easy it is to get an ID, but for a lot of people, it's not as, it's not as easy, whether we're talking about people in our homeless population or undocumented populations, people who I was speaking to, Robin Hassler-Thompson with STACK, and she was telling me that some of the survivors she works with of domestic abuse, human trafficking, they might be in the process of getting their, their documentation to be legal residents, and they are afraid to basically get vaccinated because at many of the sites, it requires proof of, of residency, which is an understandable requirement, but something that is more of a barrier than we, than we might realize. So what I would like to, to hear from my colleagues, but I would like to, you know, make a motion to, to see if we can move forward with perhaps some, some more flesh to this item about what this might look like. I did speak to a lot of communities, actually, I think all of, almost all of them in Florida from what I've seen, they work with a community partner, so whether it's legal aid or some other entity, and that's something that removes the administrative, you know, burden from the cities and offers other kinds of protections. It's something that I've seen to, as far as cost, and I see this in the item too, from the range of, you know, $15,000 to maybe $75,000 annually. It's something that some communities have even been able to use CARES money for, for the purpose of connecting people with vaccinations. So if my colleagues are with me, I would love to see if there's, if we can come up with some options for what this might look like if we want to move forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
I will second that, but clarification?
So exactly, what is the motion, Commissioner?
The motion would be if we could have staff bring back an item with some options for what this might look like if we were to move forward and adopt it formally.
There's a motion on table to bring back an item with options formally for a municipal ID card, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Mayor Pro Tem for comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I mean, my clarification would, I guess we would need to explore what city services would be able to accept it, if law enforcement would accept it, if we looked to it for our utility, or if there's other local groups. You mentioned vaccinations and those sorts of things. It's, it's a unique item, but, but I kind of know this personally. You know, I talk about, I have a brother who's schizophrenic, who spends time traveling the country in and out of homelessness, and when you're homeless, a lot of times you get your backpack stolen and you lose your ID, and it's, it can be a nightmare just to replace that, to get basic services like to cash a check. And, you know, as a family member across the country trying to help, just like that hopeless feeling of, how do we get you a basic ID so I can send you money to go check into a hotel or something of that sort? So I think like, you know, for me, it's like I would never even realize this was an issue if not for him, but I think it really speaks to the people living in the margin, so that's why I support it.
Just to let the public know that we will begin the public hearing upon completion of the item that we're dealing with right now. Motion on table, second. Any other comment?
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
I would assume that staff would also bring back a fiscal impact of this. I think you mentioned some numbers, Commissioner Porter, but certainly we would want to know the fiscal impact, and I'm having one of those senior moments. There was one other thing, I, it's, it's, I can't remember what it was. I'm sorry.
Commissioner Williams Cox?
Let me see if this was it. And how we would operate it, how it would get done. Yeah.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
All right. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. We are in recess at the City Commission, calling to order the public hearing officially scheduled at 5:00. We are now into the public hearing, and we are on item number 1501, Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Before speaking to item 15.01, I wanted to announce for the record that ordinance number 21-Z-03 is not listed in the agenda but was advertised for public hearing. The applicant withdrew his rezoning application. Since the item was advertised, I wanted to make the public aware and state for the record that there will be no public hearing on this item. Item number 15.01, the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 21-0-14, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending sections 14-3.310, 14-4.302, and 14-4.402 of the Code of General Ordinances of the City of Tallahassee relating to police employees' pension provisions and firefighters' contributions, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. The recommended option is option one, conduct the first and only public hearing and adopt ordinance number 21-0-14 to amend the pension ordinance for the PVA bargaining unit for sergeants and lieutenants, as well as for firefighters, to align the, to align with the terms of their collective bargaining agreements, which have been approved by this commission.
Mr. Clerk, do we have any public speakers on this item? Moving for action.
Move option one.
It's been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Porter. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion on table signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, passes unanimously. We're on item?
15.02.
02.
Item number?
I couldn't remember, I'm sorry, which is the item that was pulled?
The item that was, that was pulled actually wasn't on the agenda.
Got it.
So we have public hearing.
So I have the correct agenda in front of me. Thank you. 15.02, please.
Thank you. Item number 15.02 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 21-Z-07, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, designating and including additional territory as and in single-family detached residential R2 from general commercial C-2 on the official zoning map, providing for conflicts and severability and providing an effective date. Recommended action is option one, conduct the first and only public hearing and adopt ordinance number 21-Z-07, thereby amending the official zoning map from the general, from general commercial C2 zoning district to the single-family detached residential R2 zoning district based upon the findings of fact and conclusions of law of the Planning Commission and any evidence submitted at this hearing.
Mr. Clerk, do we have any speakers on this item?
Mayor, we do have speakers. The speakers on this item are connected via WebEx. We do not have any individuals here in chambers on this item.
Excellent, our first speaker.
Tawana Phillips. Tawana Phillips will be followed by Mark Cooper. As with our earlier portion, Mayor, speakers will have three minutes, and I'll give a verbal heads up when they're at about two and a half minutes.
Wonderful. Your name and address for the record, please. Ms. Phillips, are you with us? Ms. Phillips, are you with us? We'll come back to Ms. Phillips. Mr. Clerk, our next speaker.
Next is Mark Cooper.
Mr. Cooper, are you with us?
Yes, sir, I am.
Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Mark Cooper, 2417-3, Fleishman Road, with Blackhawk Engineering. I'm here to answer any questions you may have on this.
Thank you so much. Any other speakers?
Mayor, we did have Michael Kane, who had registered at the time we began our meeting, I don't believe was connected, but let's see if Michael Kane has joined us.
Michael Kane is an employee of Blackhawk and is also here to answer any questions. He's our project manager.
Excellent, thank you.
The only other speaker is Tawana Phillips. We'll make one last effort here for Tawana Phillips.
Ms. Phillips, are you here? Ms. Phillips?
She is the owner of the school and the owner or the person trying to do this. We can speak on her behalf if you have any questions. She should also answer questions.
Okay, thank you. I've seen no further speakers. Let's move into commission discussion.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, so I've got you, Mr. Bibler, on unengaged items, yes. Thank you. Sorry, I thought he was asking to speak on this item, but he's on unengaged, so we're good.
Mr. Bibler, we'll get to you in a second. All right. Commission discussion, direction.
Move acceptance.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Williams Cox. Is there a second to the motion? Seconded by Commissioner Porter, seeing no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. Item number 15.03, Madam Attorney.
Thank you. Item number 15.03, first and only public hearing on ordinance number 21-Z-08, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, designating and including additional territory as and in open space from planned unit development on the official zoning map, providing for conflicts and severability and providing an effective date. Recommended action is option one, conduct the first and only public hearing and adopt ordinance number 21-Z-08, thereby amending the official zoning map from the planned unit development zoning district to the open space zoning district based upon the findings of fact and conclusions of law of the Planning Commission, the information set forth in this agenda item, and any evidence submitted at hearing.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this?
No, sir.
Let's move to direction.
Move staff recommendation.
Okay. Properly moved by Commissioner Richardson. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. Question, Commissioner Porter?
I just wanted to make a comment and say that I know that this item is for Commissioner Lightsey, and it's been, I'm really excited to see this. I feel like she's earned it. I'm proud to support this item.
Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. Item number 15.04.
Item number 15.04 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 21-Z-09, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, designating and including additional territory as and in the University Urban Village from university transition on the official zoning map, providing for conflicts and severability and providing an effective date. Recommended action is option one, conduct the first and only public hearing and adopt ordinance number 21-Z-09, thereby amending the official zoning map from the university transition zoning district to the university urban village zoning district based upon the findings of fact and conclusions of law of the Planning Commission, the information set forth in this agenda item, and the evidence presented at hearing.
Excellent. Mr. Clerk, any speakers on this item?
Mayor Richard Deravi and Reggie Boudier are here if you have questions, otherwise no speakers.
Wonderful, thank you. Do we have any, do we have any questions? Direction.
Move staff recommendation on option one.
Been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson, first staff recommendation. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. Do we have anything else coming before the City Commission during the scheduled public hearing?
No, we do not.
All right, so we'll close out the public hearing, reopen the City Commission meeting. We are now on item number 13.08. Miss Manager?
Mr. Mayor, the City Attorney will introduce this.
Excuse me, Madam Attorney, 1308, please.
Thank you. Item number 13.08 is a discussion of the ordinance adoption process. As you are aware, on April 7, 2021, a Commissioner, City Commissioner Jacqueline Porter requested an agenda item. We brought back to the City Commission generally on the city ordinance adoption process and specifically on whether titles to zoning ordinance could be written in such a way as to provide landmark and/or street location information. This was approved by the City Commission as an agenda item. An ordinance title is required to provide fair and reasonable notice of the proposed matter to be adopted by the City Commission. It should be sufficient to alert the reader to review the ordinance for more detailed information if interested in the subject matter. Ordinances and resolutions must be introduced in writing and embrace only one subject and matters properly connected with that subject. This is designed to avoid surprise or fraud by placing the legislative body and the public on fair and reasonable notice of the content. The subject of the ordinance must be clearly stated in the title, and the ordinance may not be amended by reference to the title alone. When amending an ordinance, the section or act to be revised or amended must be set out in full. Strict compliance with statutory minimum notice requirements is required. Compliance with those requirements is a jurisdictional condition to the city's power to adopt an ordinance, and the failure to strictly comply with the notice requirements renders an ordinance null and void. Additionally, substantial or material changes during Additionally, substantial or material changes during the adoption process will require a new hearing and notice requirements. The city's current rezoning ordinance titles are legally sufficient, but additional information regarding landmarks and/or street names in the title, when available and practicable, could result in more informative and transparent notice to Tallahassee citizens. Consideration may also be given to adding landmark or street location information to the board doc's agenda item title as well. This may provide additional clarity regarding the proposed zoning agenda item. The recommendations are option one, receive the agenda item and allow staff to utilize its professional judgment to include landmark and/or location information in the ordinance title to the extent available and reasonable. Also, option two is recommended, direct staff to add landmark or street location information in board docs' agenda item titles for proposed rezoning ordinances.
Madam Attorney, quick question. I noticed in the agenda earlier, on two of our rezonings, we actually did have the landmarks in there. What are you recommending that is different from what we already do?
So on occasion, we do sometimes have that information, but sometimes we do not. So basically what we're saying is, to the extent it's reasonable and practical, we can add that information into the ordinance based on the professional judgment of staff. And then, of course, we can change and add that always to the titles of the agenda items.
So that'd be enough for discussion. Commissioner Williams Cox, Commissioner Porter?
Actually, the clerk was trying to get your attention, I think.
I was just going to add, if I'm correct, Madam Attorney, the other difference is this would make sure that when those items are advertised, we have those same descriptions and, which would be different from the agenda items themselves, so there are two places that would be addressed by the recommendation.
Thank you. Commissioner Porter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Madam Attorney, for this item. So I just want to say, my interest primarily is really just for our agendas and board docs. I'm really open to what my colleagues feel about moving forward with changing ordinance language. I know that that will incur some cost for that, for advertisements. My main priority is just that people be able to skim an agenda and know, does this affect my neighborhood? And so I was happy to see that in the agenda items for today, that we had those landmarks and cross streets or addresses wherever possible. I heard that we actually already have some staff who kind of, who when they're talking to the public about these items, they sort of already have their own, you know, Spark Notes version. And so that's really, you know, I think definitely that I trust staff's professional judgment to make this as digestible as possible. So, but I'm open to other comments about how far we want to go as far as making any changes to our advertisements and, you know, the legal language. I'm open-minded about that. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you. Yeah, I think it's a good recommendation. I think just the two that were introduced today, it was easier to follow just sitting here having the street names in the title without clicking on it. So I think that's option two. I think option one gives staff the ability to use their judgment when it's reasonable and feasible. That makes sense to me also, so I'd move option one and two.
Option number one or two been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, segmented by Commissioner Porter. Any further comment? Seeing none? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. Do we have any other business coming before the City Commission?
No, sir.
We are on citizen input on unengaged items. Mr. Clerk?
Mayor, we do have speakers on unengaged business. The first of those is Bart Bibler. He will be followed by Jeremy Block.
Excellent. Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Bart Bibler. I'm founder of I Hope Inc., LLC, three six seven three Mossy Creek Lane, Tallahassee. I Hope Inc. is a social purpose business created to improve race relations and crime prevention in Leon County. With the assistance of Tom Taylor and Ms. Maisha Mitchell, I Hope assisted in organizing the Three Two Three Oh Four Plus Prosperity for All summits, which focused our mission on poverty reduction. History will look back on yesterday as the turning point. Yesterday, we could finally breathe. We breathed the collective sigh of relief that justice was finally done for George Floyd. The jury did its job. Today, I'm asking you to please do your job to bring hope to our community by adopting a poverty reduction goal of twenty percent in five years and fifty percent in ten years. To consider joining the Vibrant Communities Program with more than three hundred and thirty cities that have committed to collective impact to reduce poverty and has a twenty-year record of successfully reducing poverty and to learn from this network for a cost of only fifteen hundred dollars a year. A couple of you have told me that I need to try harder to work with the Tallahassee Chamber. I have been working with the Tallahassee Chamber for over three years. J. Revel hosted several key stakeholder meetings at their conference room during twenty nineteen. In fact, we convened the first meeting ever of the Tallahassee Chamber, Capital City Chamber, and the Big Ben Minority Chamber, specifically focused on how to support the three chambers' efforts, united to reduce poverty. And I'm totally supportive of the Tallahassee Chamber's Prosperity Leon Initiative. But setting the poverty reduction goal and joining the Vibrant Communities Program is not their responsibility. It is yours. It's time to end our tale of two Tallahasseans. It's time to set a poverty reduction goal and to give hope that we are united to ensure prosperity for all of Tallahassee, Leon County. You are our elected leaders and we look to you to set the course and to establish the goal. Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, our next speaker, please.
Jeremy Block. And the next speaker will be Shelby Green.
Thank you so much for joining us. We appreciate it. Your name and address for the record, please.
Jeremy Block, eleven oh nine B East Sixth Avenue, Tallahassee. Before I start with my subject, I wanted to thank the mayor and the council in the city for what was done this morning in connection with the helping of people with mental health problems. It's a wonderful step forward. It's always a first step, but it's a wonderful one. Thank you for your efforts in that regard.
Thank you.
It was wonderful. So it's time for a riddle. What happened to the, what happens to a monkey when he gets his tail cut off? It won't be long now. The utilities are getting shut off next Monday. And I have some statistics for everybody and a suggestion. According to talking to the county, there have been over six thousand applications for utility and rental assistance. They've already paid out a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of the CARES Fund money. The payments are going directly to the utilities and directly to the individual landlords involved. But of course, there's a but, there's a catch, and I'm just reminding you about this. Ninety-nine percent of the people who made application for assistance did so by saying they needed utility and rental assistance. They didn't differentiate. That means that they are not eligible to receive any assistance until their landlord agrees to being paid directly by the county. And there's a lag time in there. And they have worked with a good number of landlords to date. That's where this hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars got paid out to. However, my suggestion, if you people don't want to extend the sixty-day deadline to ninety, is is their administrative way to suspend the utilities in their rears for people who have already applied for assistance. They've tried, they've done their part, they filled out a two-part application, and they might believe that they're in the clear, and I'm scared that they aren't. So my suggestion would be to try to suspend those people that are in the rears that have applied for assistance through the county or to extend the deadline for utility cutoff to ninety days from the current sixty, because that's right around the corner, April twenty-sixth. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk?
Shelby Green, and then Whitfield Leland.
Great to see you. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, board. My name is Shelby Green and my address is five one nine Ingleside Avenue. I'm also here to talk about the utility moratorium. At the last City Commission meeting, I expressed concerns about the utility disconnections resuming this Saturday, where twelve thousand households were at risk, and also what the Providence Neighborhood Association encountered while canvassing to spread this information. I'm here today to give another update on our canvassing efforts and some concerns that we have. Providence, which is a predominantly black and tenant neighborhood, has residents with both past due and delinquent utility accounts. We have one resident who owes, or sorry, not Providence Neighborhood, but while looking at the utility data, there are some residents who owe over twelve thousand dollars on their utility account. And so while we were canvassing, some trends that we saw were people are still not receiving actionable or even helpful information from the city. Some people are getting robocalls about potentially being disconnected and potential funds, but when they call back, they have to wait in the queue for hours because those lines are so busy. And for some people who do leave their phone number and get a callback, they're just said, we can't answer that information, please call the county. This is very frustrating. And the Leon CARES program stopped the applications on Monday, and we have residents who missed out on relief. Last night, several of you tweeted about the murder of George Floyd and made connections between justice being served. And last year, this board proclaimed that Black Lives Matter by painting a mural in College Town. If Black Lives Matter, as you all have proclaimed, then Black neighborhoods matter. By bulldozing this decision to cut off people's utilities with inadequate communication or even discussion or discussing alternative relief options, you're sacrificing Black lives for the bottom line. This is a publicly owned utility. I understand that the goal is to get things running again, but why can we not discuss what are some avenues to do that? That work for everyone, not only Black people, but also our working class and poor families. I'm asking you all to reconsider the resumption of utility disconnections until a relief alternative is established. If not, we will lose our residents as they fall further into debt during a pandemic and hopelessness. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk?
Whitfield Leland, though I don't see him, he may have left. So we have one speaker connected via WebEx, and that was Melanie Williams. At the time of our meeting, as we started, she had not connected, but we'll try Melanie Williams one time.
I'm here. Can you hear?
Great. Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you, sir. My name is Melanie Andrade Williams. My address is four thirty-five Cactus Street, Tallahassee, Florida, three two three zero four. Just a second. Okay, thank you. Okay. Hello, everyone. Sorry, I couldn't be there in person. I just wanted to speak to an issue that I'm not sure whether or not it has been brought to the attention of our good commissioners and mayor, and it is the issue occurring at the Point at Adams Place Apartments that is located over on South Adams Street on the south side of Tallahassee. And I'm speaking today basically in solidarity with the tenants there. I'm not a tenant there, however, I am a tenant in the City of Tallahassee. And they're currently facing an issue with their management with benchmark properties. They have not had Wi-Fi at their property since, I believe, December of twenty twenty, and they are having other issues with maintenance and getting responses from their management company, which again is benchmark real estate. And so I'm really just speaking today to ask you as our city officials to stand behind the tenants and stand with us as community members. We're not homeowners, however, we do deserve to live with dignity, respect, and the same quality of life that's expected from the homeowners in this community. I think that our landlords and property management companies should be held accountable, whether we have a registry for them, whether we have a tenant's bill of rights, or some kind of actionable item to protect our tenants just as much as we work to protect our homeowners. And again, the area that I'm talking about is called the Point at Adams Place Apartments. It's on South Adams Street on the south side of Tallahassee. The majority of the tenants there are actually famew students, if I'm not mistaken. So Commissioner Diane Williams Cox and also Commissioner Curtis Richardson, I would love to see what you all think and what you all can do to help the tenants over there, being that it's majority Black and majority famew students. I think that that'll go a long way as they are your constituents.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you joining us, Ms. Williams. Do we have any more speakers, Mr. Clerk?
Mayor Stanley Sims, and that is the last speaker that I have, either in person or virtual.
Great. Your name and address for the record, please.
Hey, I'm Stanley Sims, thirteen twenty Avondale Way. I'm also an authorized Leon CARES trusted voice. And I must say, Mr. Barnes is doing a very proactive job in sending out emails and text messages, but the confusion is not really upon their department because some of our clients are not city business accounts. They're talke. And then it's just a lot of logistics in there that kind of makes this process a little problematic at no one's fault. But what I want to talk about, Mr. Mayor, City Manager, you all can ostracize me when it comes to Frenchtown. I took Commissioner Porter down there, I took Commissioner Jerry Madlow, and these were my words to them. You ride through Frenchtown looking through blue eyes. Come see it through my brown eyes. They were amazed at some of the neglect that has gone, that is going on in Frenchtown. Two of my major issues was that overgrowth on that sidewalk, Ms. Porter, where we saw those kids walking out in that busy street. I think Ms. Renetta and Porter, Tim Porter, called me today and blocked that off. My next serious thing, Mr. Mayor, is that pedestrian crossing that bothers me. Nine o'clock at night, children are crossing two busy streets, Curtis, two busy streets. I showed it to them. And the city has responded, but it's more, Mayor. It's more atrocities that need to be pointed out. And if you don't want to walk with me, I'll tell somebody, you can meet someone else, and I'll show you. And I haven't gone inside of the communities. I went down the main arteries, Old Bainbridge Road and Bovard. But Commissioner Cox, Old Bainbridge Road is dangerous for our walking folks.
You have fifteen seconds.
Our walking folks. My last fifteen seconds, I'm gonna go over a little bit. Curtis, we gonna reconsider about these interns. Give these children the chance your daughter had. I've openly commended you on your daughter, on in front and personal. These kids need a chance.
Mr. Sims, Mr. Sims, Mr. Sims, Mr. Sims, my daughter has nothing to do with this meeting.
Commissioner Richardson.
I would ask that you not refer to my daughter.
No, sir. Commissioner Richardson, Mr. Sims, Mr. Sims, Mr. Sims, Mr. Sims.
My daughter, Mr. Sims.
We're in recess.
My daughter is at the neighborhood.
We are. Sorry I had to recess. For those of you all that are watching on TV and for those of you that have participated in this meeting, sometimes, you know, conversations get a little heated. My job to... My job to try to keep control of the meeting. And when I lose control, the best thing is is going to recess and take a deep breath and then move forward from there. I believe we have no more public comment.
That's correct.
Excellent. Okay, we'll move into the sharing of ideas. Commissioner Williams-Cox, I'll let you grab a seat. We'll start with you, Mayor Protim.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two items tonight. I think many of us may have been contacted by people concerned about our stormwater systems and infiltration and exfiltration. And I got an email with a whole list of suggestions. But I did want to just start with two, which was just asked to get a review of the reports of the consent orders from FDIP and EPA that are still outstanding, including sewage airport and electric. And then just a status report of contaminated sites around town for the Department of Environmental Protection. I just wanted to start there and see if that's a conversation we want to see come back to the City Commission for discussion, if there's interest in that or to just do that independently.
All right.
I guess I have a question.
Well, that was a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Was it?
Not a motion.
Okay, just discussion. Question for Commissioner Matlow?
So I want to make sure I understand. So you're saying we have contaminated sites?
A status of the review of outstanding contaminated sites around town from FDIP. I don't know. So I don't know the individuals. This was the conversation I had about what existed and transparency and admitting to the person I met with that I didn't know. I thought it was reasonable to bring it up, to bring us all up to speed.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure because I would hope that if we had contaminated sites, that that would already be public knowledge and we would be doing something to mitigate that. So I don't know whose area that is, but by all means.
Mr. Mayor?
May I respond? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not exactly sure what that would be. But I think the thread is, Commissioner, is any engagement with the Department of Environmental Protection. I think that's what I'm hearing. Any kind of maybe action or activity related to the Department of Environmental Protection, does that sound consistent with what you're saying?
Yeah, that sounds accurate.
We can certainly, that would most likely be out of our environmental division. John Powell leads that, and we'll certainly get with them and provide an update, however you would like us to share it.
Okay. Mayor Protim?
Thank you. And the second item many public speakers talked about is the impending disconnects of utilities. I know we got an email yesterday with an update. Mr. City Manager, can we provide where we are from the list that I think we're nine or 10,000? The last time we met and where we are now?
Mr. Mayor, if you will indulge me, James Barnes has the lead. He's got his hands firmly on the steering wheel. He's available via WebEx. If we could pull him up, I think he can give the most complete update. A lot of progress has been made. Commissioner Matlow, as you indicated, we provided an update. And we've received payments from accounts. We know that we're working our way through the cares process. Other providers are making payment. Actually, a great deal of progress and a lot of communication. I might have James just give us a, you know, one or two minute overview of where we stand.
Hello, Mayor, Commissioners and appointed officials. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Good to be with you this evening. I wanted to sort of recap where we've been since the initial discussion on non-paid disconnect customers, those that were delinquent. It was approximately 9,097 customers at that time. As of yesterday, we have received payments from over 5,211 of those customers. That's not all of them making total payments. Some are partial payments, some are pay arrangements. But that number has actually made some attempt to bring their accounts current. We do know that we have 3,500 customers approximately that are in the portal with the Leon County Cares Program to be approved for funding. This weekend, we had approximately 20 employees work Saturday and Sunday to code those 3,500 accounts to ensure that we don't have any kind of future actions and that we're in the know on who's waiting to receive approval or who's in that portal pipeline. Because we want to give them an additional amount of attention to assist them in the transition time while they're waiting. But I can tell you that we've had over 100,000 contacts with that 9,000 customers since February. Some of them have been by door-to-door visits. Some of them have been by email. Some of them have been by text. And then in addition to that, we've had their bills coded. We've also continued with the outreach effort by social media, our news release, WCOT, ads in Capital City Outlook, our partner outreach programs. Because over the last couple of weeks, we've partnered with Second Harvest of Big Ben. And we've gone into the neighborhood empowerment projects for collaboration and neighborhood level support. What that basically means is we've had folks at those events in Frenchtown and Providence talking with folks about their delinquencies, about energy conservations, getting energy audits and being in the neighborhoods on those events. We're going to continue to do that throughout the summer until nobody wants to even talk with us anymore. And right now, the efforts and activities with that initial group of 9,000, many of them are telling me that they are starting to feel like they're being bombarded with us talking with them so much about their accounts. We are now focusing on those within the last 90 days that have become delinquent and giving them a level of concierge service and attention to get them current. And those are the ones that we'll look at resuming our normal business practices with, starting next week.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. And first, thank you to you and your team and for the updates. It's been a tremendous effort. It's quite a mountain to try to address 10,000 accounts at the same time. So I really appreciate the work that you've put into it. You mentioned the 3,500 people who've applied for care. So we're in communication with them. They're not scheduled for disconnect while they go through that process?
James, let me answer this just to be clear. That's correct, sir. So all of the accounts, we kept a separate list at the time of the commission discussion about 60 days ago. So we could very specifically track where they are. And James's staff has noted each and every one of those accounts. So we can track it separately. We now identified some that have applied for cares. We can track it and take special care and kind of almost hold that to the side, if you will, while we continue to communicate. That's what James is alluding to. And frankly, we have started to get some pushback on the level of communication and the intensity of the communication. But we're going to continue to do that and keep them separately noted as we resume a more normal process for those that have become past due within the last 60 days since the commission discussion.
Okay. And if my math is correct, I think you said there were a little over 5,000 that have either made payments or got into a plan. And then there's 3,500 people who are in the cares program. And there may be 1,000 accounts outside of that. Are they just, we haven't been able to get a response at all? Is that?
James, you want to take a stab at that? The reconciliation is not perfect at this point because of the overlap. And these aren't the only sources of help. We have the Capital Area Action Agency, Elder Care. There's a variety of sources of help. So the reconciliation of exactly what bucket they're in or are they in multiple times the same bucket? We're still working through that. So we realize the timing of where we are and that, you know, there's still work to be done.
Okay.
And I would add to that, City Manager, that you're right. The reconciliation is a very tricky one because we bill every day and customers become delinquent every day. So the point in time that we had a discussion with the delinquency was that initial 9,000. But that mark moves every hour based on us getting payments and billing every day. But I am very confident that everybody is getting notified and that we have a tremendous amount of outreach effort to the point that we've had about 3,000 calls today. I will also say that our system doesn't allow for you to wait beyond five minutes because it will keep your place in line and then call you back if you so choose. So we don't have four and five hour waiting periods to get in with us.
Okay. Well, another question in the agenda or in the update that mentioned Capital Area Action had funding, I think, till September 2021. Do we know how much capacity they have in either dollars or numbers of accounts that they'd be able to deliver upon if they were connected?
No, sir, we do not. We've just been informed that they still have funding to help along with some of the other social agencies in the community. And that's what we are connecting those citizens to that are still distressed and looking for options. It's connecting them with the appropriate agencies, if it's Elder Care or Capital Area Foundation. Since our last commission meeting and update and all of you mentioning project share and some of you making personal contributions, we have seen a tenfold increase in project share contribution. And it's up 50% from pre that announcement at the meeting.
That's awesome. Great. And just finally, I guess my concern is, you know, it was mentioned about people who, even through our outreach process, still didn't know. And now the cares program is closed. The people who may have fallen through the cracks and where does that land as we move forward? You know, we didn't have a budget workshop this month. But I just don't want to be in a position where when disconnects start, it's for people who we haven't contacted or haven't responded back. And then there's not an avenue that actually has capacity to deliver upon. So I don't know if we've given any thought to that city of, you know, how we finish this off. You know, I think we've made tremendous progress. But when disconnects start, are we going to ensure that there's somewhere for people to go if they don't currently have, you know, money at all to pay?
James, I haven't got an answer, but you can probably provide a better one.
I can say that our folks understand that any of us are one step away from being in that situation. That's why we work very close with our community partners. That's why we work very closely with payment plans. And that's why we are here seven days a week, from 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. at night. And even including our field personnels, we work around the clock to ensuring that when payments are received or arrangements are made, they're back out there to reconnect those customers that have been suspended with service. So I'm very confident that we can reach some closure with 99.9% of the folks. It's just about the engagement of dialogue and connecting them with the services where they can go best.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Barnes, and thanks again. All the questions I have.
Question on point, Commissioner Williams-Cox.
I just wanted to mention that Mr. Barnes and his staff, I believe, they're doing a fantastic job. I received an email from someone. It came in at 10:52 this morning. I didn't see it because I was busy doing something else. And I got it over to them around 12:00. And by 1:51, the person was letting me know that her issue had been resolved. So thank you, Mr. Barnes. And also myself, sometimes I forget to pay my utilities on time. And I get a little text message to let me know that it's time or email or whatever. And then I'm embarrassed, so then I go and do something to make sure that I pay my utilities. So we are, so I'm just saying that the things that are in place seem to be working. And thank you to Mr. Barnes and you and your staff because I've sent some other special situations to you as they come to me. And I'm very confident that every time you all have been able to work it out. So thank you for your assistance. One of the things that I heard Ms. Shelby Green mention was that there was some folks with a huge utility bill. And I would think that you would know if an individual has that kind of bill, that there has been some outreach and there's been some something. And I will hope that anyone who has that kind of bill has spoken with you or talked with you or you two to try to make some type of payment arrangement to get that down. Are you aware of anyone with that kind of issue?
Yes, Commissioner, I am. And in many cases, those have been the one that have applied to the county because under the Leon County Cares Program, they will pay up to 12 months in the rear and up to three months moving forward into future payments. And so those are the avenues that we wanted to ensure that the county has reached. But if there's a person out there now that has that type of delinquency, I will ask them, please, 891-498, I'm sorry, 891-4968. Give us a call. We will work with you or connect you with someone who can. There is no debt that we can't work out. We just got to talk through it.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Commissioner Richardson, we'll move to you.
Yeah, I only had one thing that I wanted to announce. First of all, let me apologize to you all for my actions. As you, those of you who have known me for years, I'm seldom moved to emotion like that. But when you bring up my daughter or my daughters or my family, I'm moved. I'm not going to sit here and that's when I take off my commission coat and I become a father. And I'm not going to let anybody, because there is no reason that my family should be brought up in this meeting under those circumstances. And I won't tolerate it, Mr. Mayor. I won't. So anybody hearing this, you understand that about Curtis Richardson. I make no apologies for it. But if you all would excuse me for my actions earlier. But the only announcement that I wanted to make, a friend of mine called this morning and asked me if I would do this. Their pastor, Elder Louis Anderson at Mount Pleasant Primitive Baptist Church, will be celebrating his birthday. And I asked her what birthday it would be. She said, "Well, Commissioner, I won't get into birthdays." Let's just say we're celebrating his birthday. But he has been in the ministry, she said, for almost 50 years. So that does tell you something about
He's more than 50.
Where he is, yes. And the celebration will be this coming Saturday from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. It's just a drive-by. So it's COVID-friendly at the Old West Enrichment Center on Lake Bradford Road. So I told her I would make that announcement this evening. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much.
Sure. Commissioner Williams-Cox?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I only have one item. And it came to me late today and I've sent it to City Manager about the Ricker's Sack recommendation for the scholarship that they have that's the city-funded scholarship. I'm looking at you and Raul. Does it still exist that there's a scholarship that the city funds for Ricker's High School?
Commissioner, I'm going to have to find out about that. That is not something I'm aware of. So I'd like to check on that.
Okay. It was brought to my attention. I spoke to someone last night or last night or the night before these days are running together and from the Student Advisory Council. And they've sent a letter of recommendation. What they want to do if it's, and they tell me it's still in play, is to rename that scholarship for former Mayor Dorothy Enman Johnson. Because apparently it happened under her administration when she was mayor or on the commission. And they wanted to rename it. Instead of it being the City of Tallahassee Ricker's, they wanted it to be, I guess, also known as Mayor Dorothy Enman Johnson Scholarship. So if it is something that we're still doing, that is something that I would like to recommend and get the support of our colleagues to do. And so I mentioned it tonight so that we will know by maybe our next commission meeting where that is and what's going on with it. And so we can do something about it. I don't know when graduation is or when they award scholarships, but hopefully we'll have that information for them and be able to provide that for the next graduating class. So, thank you.
Great. Commissioner Porter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two things I want to bring up. One is, you know, I want to address Mr. Bibler, who presented about the poverty reduction goal. Is that something, I know that we have our strategic plan and certain initiatives under addressing poverty. and certain initiatives under addressing poverty. Do we have anything like a poverty reduction goal as part of our strategic plan or anywhere else?
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the strategic plan, the City Commission specifically carved out a goal area of impact on poverty. In that, these are actionable outcomes. There is no demarcation of the level of poverty or moving that level of poverty because that's not an actionable, that's not something you take action on, that's a result. So in the strategic plan, you'll see a number of actions that are geared around reducing poverty. But it doesn't say the level of poverty and how you measure against that because of the way you want to measure those actionable inputs and outputs.
Okay, thank you. Well, I would be curious if my colleagues would support something like this. An informational, if we could have an informational item perhaps on other cities that maybe have a poverty reduction goal or the usefulness of having something like that? And if it's something that we might want to consider? I understand the difference, you know, in our strategic plan about certain action items that are, as you said, actionable. But that's something that I would make a motion if we could have an informational item on poverty reduction goals and sort of what our initiatives already are locally.
Okay.
That is a motion.
Motion on table to bring back an information item regarding our goals for poverty reduction here in City of Tallahassee, signed by Commissioner Mayor Protim. Commissioner Williams Cox.
I have a question. I'm not exactly sure how you measure poverty reduction. That's my concern. We have been working tirelessly on reducing poverty, but we didn't say we need to reduce it by this percentage or this percentage. Because if you reduce it by this percentage, what do you do? You stop? It's a continual. And so I just need to know, because you know how I feel about data. How do you set, how do you measure the rate that poverty is reduced? And perhaps, you know, someone listening out there can give me that formula. But I've not heard of a formula used to reduce poverty. I thought the goal is to reduce poverty. And every day, you're working on that. So that's my concern. You know, we talk about renewable energy and we're talking about those kinds of things and reducing our carbon footprint and things that are tangible that you can actually put something to and measure. I get that. But I'm just not sure how you calculate poverty to know whether you've met your goal or not. Because the goal is for nobody to live in poverty. But we know that that's not realistic because of things, you know, circumstances or what have you. So we've been, I know, I wake up every day trying to figure out how to reduce it and how to get more people out of it. Affordable housing, having more affordable housing is a big way to do it. We're talking about a summer youth work program. That's another way to get folks out of there and doing some other things. So how do you calculate so that you know when you've met your goal? That's my question.
Commissioner Richardson?
I, I'm good.
Commissioner Porter, I'm trying, and I guess this is more of a question for the City Manager, for an information item back on our strategy to reduce poverty. What more are you going to provide us besides our strategic plan? It's got our details outlined and our goals set for the next, well, now four years moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, just kind of reacting to the request, I think that's what we would bring back. So you've got a number of items that are in that major goal area of impact on poverty. Commissioner Williams Cox almost rattled them all off, frankly. It's employment, it's job training, affordable housing, things of this nature. That's kind of the gist of what's in your strategic plan. I think that would give us the framework if you wanted to bring back an item. It is adopted by the City Commission, it is strategy of the City Commission to impact poverty. I think that would be how we would proceed.
Commissioner Porter, are you comfortable with that? Or do you want the strategic plan, is your motion?
Well, I just want to clarify, one, that I was not intending to prescribe any goals necessarily for this item. It would be purely informational. But I do want to say there are cities that have, there are ways of measuring this. There are plenty of cities that set these kinds of goals and countries who set these goals. A lot of this is, the data is already out there and measured by, usually by our census data. So I do think that, like any of our goals, you adjust them over time based on what success you have. And so that's why we revisit our goals. But my request was more a review, perhaps, of what we have in the strategic plan. And then also information on other cities' best practices related to setting a poverty reduction goal. Does that clarify? Does that make sense?
That makes sense. I think what you will find is that we are one of the best practices that other cities look to for defining goals through our strategic plan. Commissioner Matley, you had?
Yeah, I mean, I think what I would be looking for is, in many ways, an answer to Commissioner Williams Cox's questions of what that looks like. So, I mean, I would be looking for what communities have set a percentage of poverty reduction goal and what they did to achieve that and whether they were successful. And that would be, I think, information to frame around a good decision. I think there's a lot of things in our strategic plan that we're already working on. And I think we're kicking them into overdrive to accomplish them, and I think that's great. You know, we've talked previously about larger community visions and bringing other partners into that. And I suspect if we looked at other cities, it wasn't just the city that did it. It was, you know, the chambers and the counties and other governments. So in respect to Commissioner Porter's motion, that's the information I would be looking forward to see where these things were implemented and if they were successful and how successful they were.
And I'm happy to support the motion. I'm just wanting to, just in my mind, because we would have had to know where was poverty when we started with our strategic plan. So we know where we started from, what was our benchmark, and where have we gone? We're what, two years into our strategic plan? So where were we when we started? Where are we now? Where are we headed? You know, we can't just pull it out the sky and toss it out there. I appreciate learning what other communities are doing. But we've already, we're already down the road, and we don't know what it was when we started. You know what I'm saying? So we can, I think that the Commissioner Porter's motion is absolutely fine. We can bring back information. But I just want to set the expectation that we may not be able to set a goal yet because we've already, we're at the gate, and we didn't know where we started. So we can maybe say where it is now by whatever method you use to try to measure, which I don't know what that is other than surveys and, you know, doing some other maybe sophisticated calculations that's beyond my brain cells to say where we are now and then where we're going, kind of thing. And on that point, there's a lot of focus on poverty because someone said that we have a zip code in our city that's the poorest zip code. And sometimes out here in the country, sometimes out here in the state of Florida. I do not accept that because there are other places in the state of Florida that are poor than we are here in Tallahassee. And in the zip code that was named, I won't call it out because I don't want to keep giving it press, there are affluent neighborhoods in that zip code and to a university and a community college in that zip code. So how could that be the poorest? And that zip code goes all the way to the county line. That's a massive area. So I'm just saying, we have to be careful of letting people tell us what we are and who we are. We got to have our own measurement that we can go by. So that's all I'm saying in it. But I support the motion.
Motion on table for the information item made by Commissioner Porter, signed by Mayor Protim. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0, Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one more item. I was wondering, actually, as I was doing some research about the Community ID Program, I noticed the City of Gainesville, on the front of their agenda, they have a disclaimer about if you have a disability and need accommodation to participate in a meeting or if you need a speech-to-speech translation for Spanish or French Creole. Do we have anything like that for our meetings or just in general?
Yes, ma'am, we do. When we advertise our meetings, that ADA-type information is provided, including specifically a phone number to call if anybody needs assistance in that regard. Obviously, when we're meeting here in City Hall, the facility accommodates. And we also ensure that anytime we've had an off-site meeting, whether at a community center or otherwise, I think we met at a local elementary school a couple of years ago, we always ensure that the facility does meet ADA standards so that we're following those rules.
Okay. Thank you so much. That's all for me.
Excellent. I have just a couple of things. First of all, it is Ramadan. Happy Ramadan to our community and all of our neighbors. Number two, let me also say that today is Professional Administrators Day. As you know, Tammy does a tremendous job up there. Make sure to give her a high five on the way out the door this evening. She's been with the city for over 15 years and does a tremendous job. So make sure, make sure you say hi. Curtis, on a personal note, let me tell you, man, you know, we've been serving long enough. We take the arrows every now and then. I agree with you. Family's off record. I mean, you know, there's got to be a level of discourse. Your family in particular, I mean, you are the dean. You've served in three different governmental entities. Your wife is the first Ethiopian-American elected official in the United States. One daughter's midshipman, third year. The other daughter's an award-winning nationally, you know, award-winning leader here in our community. And it's a pleasure to serve with you.
Thank you.
Colleagues, let me be very clear. Unfortunately, that happened, and I can't believe we even have to talk about this. But as you notice, one of my jobs is to run a meeting. When I lose control of that meeting, I will recess immediately. That is for all of us to have the opportunity to catch our breath and everyone that's in the room to have the opportunity to catch their breath as well. Otherwise, it just deteriorates from there. So if I caught you off guard, I apologize. But I think it's my responsibility to try to keep some type of control of the meeting. And once in a blue, this is the first time in a while that that's happened. And so it's best just to go ahead and recess. And that's why I did what I did, and everybody catch their breath and come back in. Appreciate your patience. I actually think it was a great meeting today. And with that, we are recessed. I mean, we are adjourned. Recessioned. Right.